This meeting will be concluded with Nebraska's local meeting law. Do you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I would like to say.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will convene first as the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Mr. Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh is not here yet. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Kraft is present virtually but cannot vote. Commissioner Rogers and Mr. Chair.
Present. Thank you. The first item for consideration is the approval of the minutes from Tuesday, September 1. Can we include Item B, which is calling for a meeting on September 22 as the date for the hearing on Certified Assessment Corrections? Is that okay to be part of the motion? Okay, motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan to approve Items A and B. Questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, could we please vote?
And since I don't have access to the votes, I'm just guessing when you guys are done. So. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Would anybody like to address the Board of Equalization on anything not on the agenda? This is the opportunity to do so. The floor is yours, Mr. Bowman.
My name is Monty Bowman with Avarice. We've been trying to find a way where we can do this in a structured way to show where we found a lot of problems with the referee system this year. We had warned about it prior in the year. It wasn't just procedural errors. We had a lot of non-uniformity. Too many people not playing with the same set of rules. Simple rules that appraisers should have known. How long are comparables good for? Some of them knew it, some of them didn't. Besides the lost evidence, which would be coming up here as well. One of the procedural errors where confession of judgment had been used in the past was there had been husband and wife filed a protest. The wife did the protest herself, husband ran the business. She became terminally ill, passed away. Won unanimously by the referee and the coordinator, and it was dismissed. It was during his grieving period he didn't get his appeal filed, but we had been up here at the board, and it had been determined that procedural errors such as that, if a person filed their appeal to Turk, once they had their case number, then they could ask them to start a confession of judgment through county attorney. And what we are wanting to do is to show enough procedural errors, other items for clients that did file their appeals, because doing the confession of judgment, the evidence is going to change if they have to go to Turk.
Mr. Bowman, I'm sorry. Folks are on the Zoom call. Please mute yourself if you're not speaking.
And we're just trying to find a way to get it in front of the board, somewhere where these people can ask for a confession of judgment if they can show these procedural errors occurred. And we'd be more than happy to show every bit of them that occurred, because we did an audit of all 203 pages of all the protests that were filed, looking for the 4% that were just commercial and industrial. It's the only two that we were looking at specifically. And these errors run throughout all of them, and it's not just mine. There are other business owners that are here as well. So we're just looking for a way or an opportunity to be able to show the board exactly what happened and how that problem can be fixed. There's already something in place.
Mr. Bowman, sorry. Emily Smith, you need to mute yourself. Thank you. Ms. Smith, please mute yourself. We're unable to do it for you.
Please continue, Monty.
That's what we're trying to get up here in front of the board, is is there a way we can structurally have it to where these clients can show that there was some type of an error committed where they should be able to get a confession of judgment to try to get a fair referee hearing. There's a lot of simple ways to do it. The page that you have on your website, prior to us ever filing protests, we share to the owners, because it shows the documentation they're allowed to bring. The only problem is it isn't completely detailed enough, so the comparative market analysis, the broker's opinion of value, which two of the clients, not mine, but two people did provide those items this year, and they were ignored, because there's nothing on the website, there's nothing that is given to the referees that shows them this is the set of rules. If everybody's got the same set of rules, it'll be a lot easier to take and conduct these hearings. And they're not breaking it down that the comparables are good for three years. If you just recently purchased it, it's good for three years. How long is that evidence good for? They're asking for rent rolls. They're asking for income statements. Yes, but how long is it good for? Because not all the referees agree. They don't know that there's a three-year rule. Some of them don't, some do. So we're ending up with completely inconsistent decisions across the board. We won on three or four where we said, I'm comparing my dirt's 375, all my neighbors at 225. Some of the referees said, you can argue that way. Then we have 34 decisions that specifically they said, you can't take those individual pieces and do that. So none of the rules are being followed across the board. And that's the same way with the coordinators. We did also have one that the coordinator and the referee agreed and said he won, and it was dismissed. Same way before, this one did file their appeal to Turk. So we have straight procedural errors, and then we have the non-uniformity, which runs through probably almost 80 of these commercial and industrial properties. And they make up a small percentage of all of the protests that are filed, but the amount of mistakes and errors that run through it is 50, 60, 70% of them. They're even asking taxpayers, why did you only use one approach to income or one approach to value? That question doesn't come up on your page. Why would they have to know that? They just know that you said income. Well, I don't make that much. You said I paid this much. No, this is what I paid. Not income approach, not the cost approach. Only an appraiser approaches it that way. So for him questioning you, doing that doesn't make any sense. And on our agenda coming up, you're going to see a couple of those examples. Otherwise, we do have one owner who is here. But the evidence that he needs to present has to be something more visual that you can see, because his property ended up doubling in size, doubling his value. He changed from a one-story to a two-story, kept changing from a restaurant to a bar, retail store. These classification changes have happened consistently from 14, 17, and again in 20. And when you walk into his place, it's confusing, because you see Nate stumble in, but it's actually a restaurant. And when you walk into a landing, there's a sign that says dining room down, banquet up. There's nothing about a bar, it just happens to have one in it. There's only nine stairs up, nine down. Full play of stairs is 14 to 16 stairs, but they still call it a two-story, and they doubled his size, and it was a one-story for years. Those are the types of things that we showed the referees, and they said that there was nothing convincing in it that would change that.
In two sentences, what do you want us to do?
Set it up so we can at least show.
Set it up.
We can give you an outline of what these people are asking.
Excuse me, set it up, did you say?
We can put together an outline for you of specifically a process to request confession of judgment and why.
Why don't you do that? Put it in writing to us in about just a couple of sentences. Don't go on, because it doesn't help. Just a couple of sentences, say you need to do this, you need to do that, need to do this. Thank you. Okay?
Okay. And put together the steps to show that this has actually occurred?
I don't, I'm just saying, you cannot go on for hours about it and talk about how many stairs there are in a building. That doesn't help.
Yeah, because you're not going to see it.
Give us a nutshell. In a nutshell, tell us, I need to have you move this to this place so I can get in. I need to have parking for this. I need to have this. Short, concise. Tell us what you need, and we'll tell you if we can do it. But don't go on and on and on and on about everything.
Okay. I'll put something together for Tuesday.
Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to Resolutions D through F.
Motion to approve and adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't turn the page.
What?
I did not turn the page. We're not ready to adjourn yet.
Oh, okay.
Well. Yeah, it would be D through L are the resolutions on the agenda.
And I just know there is, in addition, a Mr. Bowman on Item G, there's probably going to be a speaker, so if we wanted to pull items.
All right, let's just do D through F for the moment then, which was your motion, I think, Mike?
Yes.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Do we have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve Resolutions D through F. If there are questions or comments to this, could we please vote?
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution G, Certified Assessment Correction, dealing with four parcels for Glassman Property, Philip Glassman, KGP Holdings, and Kyle J. Phillips. What is the pleasure of the board?
I've got a question.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to approve Item G. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. I know you had a question, Commissioner Boyle.
I just wondered if there's anybody here to speak on these, or are these people notified of these changes?
Well, these were from last week.
Okay.
The Glassman, or two weeks ago.
So are they, nobody's going to speak on them?
Well, they're both present. Both owners are present on the Zoom call. I think Mr. Phillips is not planning on speaking, but Mr. or Mrs. Glassman may.
Thanks. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Did you have something?
On this one, yes. Mike Goodwillie, Douglas County Assessor Register of Deeds Office. I am not going to speak on the merits, more on the mechanics of some of this.
Thank you.
In our view, you've hired these professional appraisers to review this, and for the most part, we're not interested in getting in the way. But what I would mention on this item is there is a duplex owned by Mr. Phillips or Mr. Phillips Company that's located at 31st and Marcy. And it is TIFT. It's a tax increment finance project. And initially, which means there are two account numbers, one for the base and one for the excess. So there is a spreadsheet, Attachment A, that came along with this. If you had that, I would point out to you that the base value was $78,900. The excess was $232,800, and I think the total value was a little in excess of $311,000. It looks like the referee has made a recommendation to reduce the base parcel, but to leave the excess alone. That's absolutely the opposite of what by law should happen. When value for a property in a TIFT project is changing, that change should operate first by law on the excess rather than the base. A base can be decreased, but only if there's no more excess left. So my suggestion to you, although we're not sure we entirely agree with the referee recommending a reduction here, but it looks like they recommended a reduction of $11,200 to this duplex. If you are going to agree with that recommendation, that needs to be, that needs to come off of the excess parcel rather than the base.
And Mr. Goodwillie, now, the one that went forward to the board last week, you are correct. The one for this week, I noted that, and we switched it around.
Okay.
So the base, the base is being left the same, and the excess is being recommended to be reduced.
That's exactly what should happen. So if you wish to adopt the referee's recommendations on this particular item, my only suggestion to you would be the recommendation they're making on Parcel 232-1820576 be applied to its companion Parcel 232-1820578.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
And that is being recommended, just so you know. The spreadsheet in front of you reflects what Mr. Goodwillie is, and he's the one that brought it to our attention. So we made those changes after he did that.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Mr. Goodwillie, isn't there a law that when a person gets TIFT, that they agree not to appeal the valuation for a certain number of years?
It's not a law. What the City of Omaha does is, as part of their tax increment finance agreement with the developer, they enter into an agreement with that developer that the developer will not protest the value down below a certain point. Quite frankly, I'm not sure how enforceable that is, and we're not the TIFT agreement cops. And I don't know if, and I don't know if Mr. Phillips signed off on that contract, or he's like a secondhand purchaser. In our experience, if you're the developer of the TIFT, Commissioner Boyle, and you sign that agreement, but then you sell a parcel to Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Duda doesn't give a darn about the agreement you signed with the City of Omaha.
Well, the city might, so I.
Can I chime in real quick? Anytime a TIFT property is protested, our office contacts Bridget Hadley in the City of Omaha Planning Department, and if there's an issue with it, she contacts a property owner, and a lot of times, they just withdraw the protest. In Mr. Phillips' case, I know I spoke to myself, to Ms. Hadley about this, and apparently there's no problems. I mean, I think had the recommendation been by quite a bit of money, probably there would have been an issue, but since it's going from a total of $311 to just $300,000, she did not say this to me. It's just my presumption is that they don't have a problem with the recommendation. So, but the city planning is aware that this person is protesting the property valuation.
Well, I think we ought to explore that a little further, because saying we don't care affects the valuation and the money that goes to political subdivisions, so I'd like to get that very, very clearly satisfied. And the other thing is that I believe that an agreement with the city over a piece of real estate property that's properly filed with the Register of Deeds would apply to later buyers. So I think if you make an agreement with the government to do this and not to appeal for 15 years or whatever it is, that it applies to future buyers as well. I don't, it should anyway. If they're not filing something correctly, that's not right.
Commissioner, that's maybe a perfectly reasonable presumption. What I would simply say is this. If, you know, you mentioned the amount of tax dollars that go to the political subdivisions needs to be protected, and that's absolutely right, and that's why by law, any kind of reduction should only come off the excess. That's why I'm making the recommendation I made.
That's good. Okay. But I'd like to have us make sure, we can go ahead, and I guess we can approve this. It's only a small amount of money, but I think we need to make sure that the city's protecting all of everybody's interest in this, and if there is an agreement that it applies to future buyers. That's pretty serious.
I'll just reiterate, I spoke to, the person was heavily involved in these TIFT projects, and she didn't express any concerns, so.
Well, let's get it in writing.
The motion before us is to uphold the referee's recommendations on those items in Item G. Further questions or comments to the motion before us? If not, I would ask for the vote.
Okay. Just surprised that the Glassmans didn't want to say anything, but I will go ahead and start.
That's all right.
Start the.
Are they?
Ms. Glassman, did you want to say anything, or Phil, if you're on the phone? Not Kyle Phillips, but Phil Glassman?
Okay.
All right. Well, we did see that you unmuted, but we're not hearing anything.
Let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, the vote will begin. Motion passes five to one. Commissioner Boyle voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. This brings us to Item H. We have three parcels here for consideration. Okay, we have a motion to approve Item H to uphold the referee's, I believe this would be upholding the referee's recommendation.
Yeah, and these three properties are recommending changes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to accept the referee's recommended changes in Item H.
Mr. Chair, could I ask, how did these get on our agenda? I don't understand who's bringing these? The referees bringing these, or who is it?
Dan Esch, County Clerk. So basically, these are, there's various situations, and they get brought to our attention after the fact. And in these three parcels, the referees made comments, and the written comments that are provided to the homeowner or property owner and protester, the comments stated there was no supporting documentation submitted, and there was. So I can only speculate as to how it was missed, but we acknowledged, you know, I mean, we looked into it, and yes, there was supporting documentation submitted by the protester. So we asked the referee coordinator to please re-review the complete protest, because you obviously didn't look at all the documentation submitted. They did, and then they decided that, and this wasn't, you know, when these claims are made, we always make sure that the stuff was submitted on time, and it was. And it was just an error on our part that caused all the documentation not to get reviewed. And once the referee coordinator did review all of it, he came up with a different recommendation for these three protests.
Okay. Well, my question is, if this is, you know, there's three properties here, and if there were mistakes that we made, I think it just highlights the ineffectiveness of the Board of Equalization hearing these appeals. I mean, how many others are out there that didn't?
You have to look at Item 11 as well, because there are, there were 10 total evidence lost, and they were all reviewed. Three were approved, and seven are, again, on the agenda.
Well, that's not my question. My question really is, if there are 15 or 20 of these people, what about the rest? So I think we need to really look at our whole procedures pretty thoroughly to see what's happened here, because I'm sure there's other taxpayers out there that don't have the benefit of this. So that's right. Let's go ahead and proceed with whatever. We made the motion to approve, didn't we, or did we?
But I'm questioning the amount on one of these, the bottom boom, the very first one, that is a hotel on 70th and Grover. And I sent to Dan Esch, because there was a big confusion. This hotel was bought during June, when they were trying to do the personal property return for the hotel. So it wasn't completed until about the 13th of June. The sale happened on the 19th, and they were filing the protest at the same time. So Mr. Musto, the coordinator, said he determined the value was $6,800,000. I sent a copy of the personal tax return, which was completed, for $266,000. We just asked that the 6.8 million reduce the 266,000 from the total. Because personal property, he's paying on that anyways for the return, so it should be taken off of the total 6.8, which he put down as total consideration in his notes to Dan.
Okay. Commissioner Borgeson, please.
Would you say that one more time? You want, out of the 6.8, how much do you want taken off?
The personal property return is $266,000, I think $120,000, something like that.
$120,000 of that?
$266,120,000. That's the amended tax return that I sent to Dan.
So what's the total property valuation you're requesting today for that property?
It's the $6,800,000, which is what Musto requested.
Right.
And then I sent the tax return, which was $266,120,000. That should come off of the 6.8. It should be 5.0. Yep. It's not a big adjustment.
If the mathematician agrees with you.
But that was the only one on those three.
Okay.
The maker and the seconder of the motion, are you amenable to that as a friendly amendment? All right, to reduce the 6.8 million to $6,533,880. All right, then that is how the motion now reads. Questions or comments to the motion as it sits now? Then could we please vote?
Give me one moment, please.
We got Ellen's flying fingers back. I expected.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan, how did you vote? Yes. Okay, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. This brings us then to Item I. Three more corrections, Certified Assessment Corrections, again, having to do with supporting documentation not getting reviewed by the referees in a timely fashion. These do have changes in valuation that are recommended by the referees. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers, to approve Item I. Any questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Commissioner Borgeson? Oh, voting yes? Okay. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Brings us to Item J. We have two items here. Again, changes in valuation are being recommended.
Motion to approve.
All right. Questions or comments to Item J? Then could we please vote?
Commissioners Borgeson and Kavanaugh, how do you vote? Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Borgeson, you did show up. I apologize. I'm missing Commissioner Rogers. Do you vote yes, Commissioner Rogers? Okay. Motion passes six to zero.
I have a question on I.
Oh, shucks.
I just want to make sure that I understood you correctly. I'm Armstrong, and you approved that this is going to be.
Valuation? The valuation, the change?
Yes.
We upheld the referee's recommendation of a change.
Okay, so that's all I need then.
Okay.
So paperwork goes forward from here.
Right.
We've had a hard time getting to this point. I'm just trying to cover my tracks as I go now.
Okay.
Well, I think you beat City Hall. You beat City Hall.
I wouldn't declare that just. Okay, so we will receive something in the mail?
Yes, Mr. Armstrong, the clerk's office will send you a notification showing the new valuation that was approved today.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
We will move on to Item K. We have two parcels under Item K. There are no changes being recommended on these two parcels by the referees. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle. Was that Commissioner Rogers, second, on Item K? Questions or comments? Then I would call for the vote, please.
Okay. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. This brings us then to item L, where we have a number of properties. There are no changes being recommended by our referees on these. Good morning again, Mr. Bowman.
One of, we've got problems where I think on every one of these, we need to take an address and show where there's problems on them, but there's one specifically, they talk about 175, 25 Gold Plaza. In the evidence that was presented with it, Mr. Musto did put his final numbers down, and he found that the county assessor's net NOI was 116,274. Now, he took the, this is a neighborhood shopping center, and this client submitted the exact same profit and loss statements for two shopping centers. In this case, what Mr. Musto did was he determined from the paperwork what the NOI would be for the property owner. And his three years came up to 115,105 and 105, which never once reached the 116,000 of the county assessor. And he says, no change. Well, it changes it from 1.45 to 1.358 million, or $94,000, just on his numbers. So, this one should have actually been approved. And that's why I think there needs to be clarification on this one and a few of the other ones on this list, because according to this, it should have been approved. The numbers say it was.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, instead of the 1.453500, it should be what?
It's 1,453,425. And then the actual amount would be 1,358,563. That's using the same cap rate as the county assessor, it's just using his final NOI average. It's 94,862 dollars difference.
Say the difference again?
96,000, or 94,862. That's on the NOI, not on the value.
But he used that to calculate what it was, and that's where the difference is.
Because I mean, his notes specifically says 116, and there was only one year that they got close to 115. The other two years were at about 105. So, just looking at that, I was going, added up his numbers, and if he would have finished, but not all of the referees would do this, take the numbers and show you at least some of the formula, because then you can check the numbers. That's part of the uniformity problem, because his other, other property had a completely different referee, who didn't even determine the NOI. This, we could at least see where there was an error, because we could see some of the numbers. That's why I said the uniformity drove us nuts, and then when we added this up, they're going, it doesn't make any difference. 2,200 a year in taxes, I think is still, still pretty good substantial amount.
Alright, I would ask the maker and the seconder of the motion, what your pleasure is at this point.
I'm ready to vote.
As, as is?
Yes.
The seconder?
Can't.
Okay. Commissioner Borgeson?
Well, I think he makes a good point, though. In changing it from the 1.453500 to 1.358563, again, he's got the numbers to verify the, I guess, the error that was, that was made in the calculation of the value. So, would you guys be amenable to changing that one to 1.3?
Well, the figure?
58563.
What was the figure again?
Okay, that's fine.
Alright. Would be the new value on the Morris Heritage.
17525 Gold Plaza.
Alright, so that's accepted as a friendly amendment. That's how the motion now sits. Questions or comments to the motion as it sits? If not, I would, does this include, can the motion include adjournment? I'm not aware of need for executive session. Alright, then I would call for the vote.
One moment, please. Alright, just so, because I know how this is going to go, Mr. Bowman, you're going to question this number. So, we're approving 1,358,563 dollars for 17525 Gold Plaza. Alright, so we're all straight on that.
Yep. Any other ones, I'll address later.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, how do you vote? Yes, okay, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. This brings us then to the Board of Corrections. Could we please have the roll call for the Board of Corrections?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Present.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Kraft is present virtually, cannot vote, Commissioner Morgan here, Commissioner Rogers, and Mr. Chair.
There. Thank you. Item one is approval of the minutes from the Board of Corrections meeting held August 25th. No move? Questions or comments? Then could we please vote on that?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Would anybody like to address the Board of Corrections on anything that is not on the agenda? If not, we will turn to the report from our Director of Corrections, Mr. Mike Myers. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. I'll jump right in. Enclosure number one, Administrative Services. Following the second month of the fiscal year, we are over budget by 1,473,664 dollars. I do want to point out that the vast majority of that is due to CARES-related purchases that have not been credited back to our budget as of yet. There was 334,041 dollars spent on overtime during the month of August. That was a decrease of 23,000 from the previous month. We did have a spike of overtime due to COVID-19-related absences during August, especially during the second half of the month. Since we are paid in arrears, I expect that, that expense to hit us in my September report, which I'll provide to you next month. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and In-House Programs. Due to the drastic impact of COVID-19 on community corrections activities, our data are significantly different than the norm. Many of our staff have been repurposed to allow essential functions to continue. During a significant outbreak of COVID-19 among staff and incarcerated individuals, or excuse me, due to a significant outbreak, work release, the Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, our therapeutic communities in the jail, our GED program, and the Law Library were all suspended throughout the month of August. Several CARES Act-related renovations projects are getting underway at the Criminal Justice Center to take advantage of the temporary closure of that facility. Our reentry services staff have had significant portions of their workday converted to facilitating online court hearings and other legal functions. Combined, they facilitated 490 court hearings and facilitated 38 hours of review of discovery materials. Our 24/7 sobriety program has also been changed drastically during the pandemic in order to minimize face-to-face interactions. And we have seen and continue to see an increase in the rate of violations, especially for drug testing, due to that lack of immediacy in, in frequency of testing. Forty individuals were placed on the program. There were 1,857 breath tests administered using remote testing technology. Twenty-seven were positive for alcohol use. There were also two no-shows. The breath testing compliance rate was 99.9 percent. Twenty-seven individuals were monitored for 621 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows, one tampering violation, and zero alcohol violations. The SCRAM compliance rate was also 99.9 percent. There were 39 saliva drug tests administered with two violations. And there were 72 drug testing patches submitted for testing with 37 violations. Work release was closed throughout the month. House arrest admitted 69 individuals. The Reentry Assistance Program was closed throughout the month. Corrections programs and our therapeutic communities were also closed during the month. Pretrial Services continues to provide daily information to the courts regarding, for candidates for bond reduction and early pleas in response to the pandemic. Fifteen individuals were referred for priority prosecution, saving 142 bed days. 292 individuals were placed on pretrial release. Over the course of the month, 1,244 individuals were managed on pretrial release with an 87 percent compliance rate. And the Law Library was closed throughout the month. I do want to mention that we did reach out to Tom Riley and his staff regarding the Law Library access. We are still providing some services directly on a one-on-one basis for, for folks as, as we can. We just have the, had to take the position where we could not bring people together into one room at the same time during the outbreak. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Our third-year ACA documentation is being gathered. We're actually coming down the home stretch for that. We are nearly prepared for our upcoming audit, probably late October or the first week of November. And what I've learned, actually, just this week, it will sort of be a hybrid approach. They will, a lot of the audit will be done virtually, where we will scan and send documentation to them demonstrating compliance with their standards. But they will also send a smaller number of auditors than usual for a shorter period of time to visit the jail in person and Community Corrections in person, so that they can physically verify that we're in compliance with their standards. Enclosure number three, Personnel. Thirteen officers graduated from the Training Academy on August 21st. Twelve officers, all below the rank of Sergeant, left employment in August. The impact of shift bidding in COVID-19, in addition to our typical attrition, may have contributed to this increase. This is the second month in a row we've had a higher rate of attrition. One of the things that, when things maybe regain some, some sense of normalcy that I want to work on is we, we do tend to lose staff after, in the month or two after shift bidding each, every six months, as staff may get assigned to shifts that just don't work for their personal life, childcare, et cetera. That's a tough nut to crack, to figure out how to, how to resolve that, but, but it is worth the effort, I think, to try and, to try and figure out if there is some middle ground we can reach with the union on that. Sergeant Walter Cummings also retired in August, and we talked about him last month. We concluded the month having 370 of our 396 authorized uniformed staff, that's a net loss of 11. We anticipate a class of 20 to, 20 to 25 new officers to begin training on September 25th. So, that should do, at least get us back up to where we were a couple of months ago in our staffing levels. Enclosure number five, Population. We had 1,338 admissions. That's a decrease from the previous month. There were 1,278 releases. Typically, our admissions numbers and our release numbers are almost identical. I think we had a, there was the disparity this time due to court transports being suspended from the jail due to COVID outbreak for, for two weeks during August. That resulted probably in some people staying in custody longer, because their court hearings were unable to be held. Our high count was 1213. Our low count was 1,152. Our average daily population did increase. It was 1,182. Also contributing to that is the closure of the Criminal Justice Center. Not being able to house folks over there bolstered the numbers inside of the jail as well. Custodial bank sanctioned bed days were 36, and again, I've said this to you in other months, I really want to give credit to probation for being very creative and finding other ways besides incarceration to hold their folks accountable. Every month, this number gets lower, when I didn't think it could get lower the previous month. This number used to be up to, you know, around 500 bed days per month. So, they have really been, responded well to adapting in the, in the pandemic. The U.S. Marshal population increased, the ICE population decreased, the felony pretrial population increased slightly. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased, and probation violations remained steady. The female population, excuse me, has increased. One of the four female housing units has been, has been designated as our quarantine unit. However, at the conclusion of the month, and actually since then, we have been, have, we have opened up a fourth female housing unit because of increased numbers of females in the jail. Enclosure number six, Medical. There were 1,245 intake screenings and 362 physical and health assessments. Imates were sent out to the hospital 17 times for emergent medical care. Six of those were by 911. There were five hospital admissions, which resulted in 14 days of hospitalization. Enclosure number four, or excuse me, seven, Mental Health. There were 54 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 92 initial mental health assessments. There were 58 mental health infirmary placements. There were three board of mental health referrals and two transfers to long-term psychiatric facilities, namely, the Lincoln Regional Center, which after their outbreak of COVID earlier in the summer, has now resumed transport. Other noteworthy items. We continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. August was the most difficult month to date in the battle with COVID-19. At one point, 50 staff were out simultaneously with positive COVID-19 tests. This placed a tremendous stress on, on DC/DC as a whole to maintain critical operations in the face of a significant staffing shortage. In addition to the stress and worry of individual officers, in addition, the stress and worry for individual officers and their families was profound. I did have a story of a, one of our staff who was positive, who then also his infant son got it. So, it is, you know, our staff deserve a lot of gratitude for what they've persevered through and sacrificed this year. In addition to the previous closure of Community Corrections, other operations were scaled back during the month in order to staff security posts. Our staff are to be commended for their efforts throughout the pandemic, but especially during the month of August, when they faced mand, when be, often faced with mandatory overtime and a, and a higher risk than normal to their personal well-being. We increased the level of PPE during August, substituting N95 masks for cloth masks and implementing protective eyewear. This appears to be having an impact on the rate of transmission of the virus in the jail, as we've seen a dramatic decrease in the number of staff and incarcerated individuals impacted in recent weeks. As of this morning, we had one staff member who was out, actually, who's been kind of battling it for a few weeks. So, we haven't had any new infections for a couple of weeks for our staff. And we are down to, from nine housing units that were on isolation or quarantine status, down to two, one of which being our quarantine unit, and one of which being our infirmary for females, where we just have one female who, who has a positive test, who's in our infirmary in a negative pressure room. So, things are thankfully much better on this front than when I spoke to you a month ago. Court transports, as I mentioned earlier, were halted for two weeks during August, during August due to the number of housing units impacted by COVID-19. We also increased the amount of PPE worn by defendants attending court. We worked hand- We worked hand-in-hand with the Sheriff's Department, with county, district, federal, juvenile court, all the above, to develop some new protocols for our inmates when they're being transported. And basically, they were wearing face shields. They were they've got upgraded masks when they went to court. We put hand sanitizer in the transport vehicles and made that available to Sheriff's Office in order to alleviate the concerns that the courts rightfully had about protecting their courtrooms from infection. And court transports resumed just prior to the end of the month. Proposals were received for and evaluated for pretrial release software, a body scanner, and tablet devices for the incarcerated population. The purchasing process of those items is commencing now in September. Requests for proposals were published for body-worn cameras, and those proposals will be received and evaluated in the coming weeks. We have also moved forward with numerous CARES-related purchases and projects. Renovations to improve airflow and social distancing have been quickly planned and are being initiated. We are also purchasing many products which will aid in the sanitizing and disinfecting of the entire Department of Corrections campus. And with that, I'm ready for your questions.
Let me start off by saying you and your staff are doing an absolutely amazing job under very trying circumstances. And I wish there were more we could do to show our support and appreciation for what they're doing. It's most impressive. Questions or comments to the Director? Commissioner Boyle?
Kavanaugh.
Go ahead.
I just didn't know he didn't know you were asking. I wanted to ask if I could on some of the acronyms that you use. The only one that I always forget is SCRAM. If when you could you spell out what that is?
Sure.
Just like to do the other ones.
That I don't know if I could tell you what that means.
You don't have to.
But I can tell you what it is. It is it is the brand name for the ankle bracelet.
Oh, yeah.
Which people wear to detect alcohol use through their skin.
Okay, if you just spell out what it is before the word, the acronym, that'd be helpful.
And we'll do that.
That on behalf of Commissioner Kraft. I wanted to ask about, not really, I'm just joking. I want to ask about bail. We've talked about trying to do something about people that are stuck in your facility due to being unable to pay bail. Are we making any progress? I know you're taking care of a lot of good people and getting them moved up and accelerating things, but I and I don't want to ask you for more reports, but I'd be interested in knowing how many people are, you know, are in the facility that are sitting there with, you know, a five-hundred-dollar bail or less. And so I don't Commissioner Borgerson worked on this quite a bit, too, so I'll stop asking that question and let her pick up if she wants. But I'd like us to, and I know there's some resistance from the prosecutors and also from some judges. I brought it up at a criminal justice meeting, and I almost had to have security before I left. But anyway, I'd like to explore that further. Then the on the Law Library, I wonder whether there isn't something we could do with particularly with all of the children using tablets. If there's some way we could allow prisoners, you know, to have tablets with very limited access so they could continue to research their legal rights.
Absolutely.
Without going into the facility. I'd like to see us explore that, and maybe the Bar Association or somebody else might step up.
So we this is not an immediate solution. But we actually do have, I will be selecting a vendor, and it'll probably come back before this board within the next couple of weeks specifically for tablet devices that are designed to be used inside of correctional facilities.
Great.
And they do have Law Library content in addition to a host of other benefits.
All right.
Well, when we bring that to you, it's actually the benefits to those are quite robust. And so we'll I'll do a short presentation on the highlights of all of the benefits that we'll get from implementing that resource.
All right. And then I want to ask a question I've questioned all along, and I guess I did like kind of like an update on the ACA. You know, is it what do we get out of that and what do we pay? And is it really is it effective? I don't need a comment today necessarily, but if you have something in the future you'd like to present or if you'd like to comment now. Why don't you mention what the?
I can tell you that we we pay the American Correctional Association once every three years for two audits, one for community corrections and one for the jail. I believe this year, I'm going to give you a ballpark. It was in front of the board a month or two ago. Twenty thousand, I think, was the ballpark figure. It what what compliance with any outside set of standards provides us is a check to make sure that we're keeping our eye on the ball in terms of our day-to-day operations. You know, we can do that ourselves anyway, but it's some there is some benefit to having somebody who doesn't see the same things you see every day that you can start to maybe overlook to to provide that feedback. We also, just as a reminder, by being accredited by the American Correctional Association, we there are some tangible benefits into the number of beds we have in the annex. ACA's standards are tend to be more updated and modernized compared to Nebraska jail standards. And as long as we're credited by the American Correctional Association, we do not have to revert back to the American or to the Nebraska jail standards, which creates some issues for us in terms of housing in our annex.
Okay.
So there is a there is a very tangible benefit.
Okay. Well, I think the charge sounds pretty reasonable. I thought it was a lot higher for some reason. I wanted to ask if I could move this is one that I think we've talked about. I know we have talked about on various times, but you know, I years ago, and people know this, but anyway, I've always liked to bring it up because it worked. I talked to the police officers about going to a four-two, four-two, five-two work schedule so that even the lowly officer on the street gets a weekend off every few while. And I really think we ought to be looking at this in some of our facilities and particularly this one. And I we have to work with the unions to give it a try and see what works. But I sure would like to try that. But now they're I think the police are on a straight four-two shift where they work four days off, two, four days off, two, all the way through, which which really is pretty helpful, helps, I think it helps with morale and helps get people out of the job. Anyway, let's look into that further. Then we can talk about that another time and get something moving. Finally, I wanted to ask about when all these people were brought in, the demonstrators were brought in a couple a month ago or whenever. I assume we charged the city for all of that activity?
Yes, I was informed after we spoke about it at the last Board of Corrections meeting that at least the vast majority of individuals who were booked in on that day were booked in under city ordinance violations. So the city did get a bill for that.
Thanks a lot, Mike. Keep it up you're doing. I did talk to Mike about this. I know the red light's flashing, but I talked to Mike on the phone the other evening about the possibility of putting together, and I've got some campaign funds that I'd be willing to contribute, putting together some kind of a nice food buffet of maybe going to somebody like Orsi's and some other places and getting some food and some fresh fruit and for a twenty-four-hour thing in their one of their rooms. So people then have some fresh food, give them some notice of it so they don't bring lunch and everything, and let them know that we care about them, we're aware of them and what's happening. I really think that would help the morale. I'll send you all an email, see if you can contribute and what you can do so it's not government funds being used. And finally, I do want to mention, of course, we had a one of our employees who was injured, and I want to mention just that it was an employee who was attacked and apparently has a broken jaw. And there was another officer who got into the mix and tried to defend him and get the perpetrator off, and he has some problems with the hand. So I just want to let those people know that, and I've talked to Mike about, let them know that we're aware of the injuries, we are on their side, and we, you know, really hope they heal very quickly. They're good people. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I would endorse Commissioner Boyle's idea about sending some assistance to our brave correction officers. And on top of that, I think that we should entertain augmenting them with a real demonstration, which is hazardous duty pay for the COVID exposure that they've all experienced, you recommended. I think some things on COVID, but you know, there on the front lines of that, when you had that huge outbreak, it takes its toll. We've had this at the Health Center, too. I think that all of our people that have been on the front lines of battling COVID have been put in harm's way and deserve hazardous duty pay that we could easily compensate them for out of our CARES thing. So I think sheriff's deputies, corrections officers, health personnel all deserve that. And that, I think, on top of Commissioner Boyle's idea of sending them a buffet, is a real demonstration that we care about the hazards that they've faced on our behalf. I have a few questions for you. Thanks for this. And, you know, the reports just seem to get better and better. I just have a couple of style points because.
No problem.
It's difficult for me to pull out some information sometimes. But on the racial trend, page forty-two, if you could include with that actual percentages of population, I had to go through and pull off the graph and ballpark it as much as I could. But from what I could see, the minority population of the correction center is almost seventy percent. And it would be easier if you just.
Right.
Applied those numbers, the actual percentages are obviously available because you've got the graph there, so that we could see at a glance what's the population. And that would require combining the male and female population. I understand the breakout and I appreciate it. But if there could be, you know, an overall, there's forty-five percent African-Americans, which it appears there are, and almost fifteen percent Hispanics, which it appears there are, and Native Americans are another four percent, and others are another three percent. If we could have that at a glance, kind of as a summary, that would be helpful. But thanks. This is a great report. The overtime on page eight, which is understandable with the COVID outbreak that you've dealt with, that there would be some overtime expenditures. And it looks like the expenditures over time were coming down, and then you experienced this outbreak, and obviously you were missing a lot of people and you had to put people into overtime. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Because on page seven, when you do the personnel, the authorized versus on hand, it looks like you were making really good progress up until the onset of COVID, and then it's just kind of plateaued. Is that connected?
I it to an extent, yes. We've had a there we have had a handful of staff who have underlying health conditions who their physicians recommended that they probably need to find a different line of work or to retire, and some of those things have happened. We have also had, like I said, the impact of shift bidding seems to impact us in the aftermath of that. And and there's just a variety of reasons, you know, some have left to go on to college and, you know, pursue other opportunities. There's not, I think the COVID has exacerbated it and brought it higher than what we would expect, but it's not all attributed to COVID.
Gotcha. The population on page thirty-five, you know, I gotta say, it appears to be fairly stable. I would just point out, it's a little difficult to read. I think there was a typo or something and setting this up so that numbers are overlaid with numbers. I can kind of make it out, but it's, again, just kind of a style point. But I think that's a good thing in light of everything, that our population's, you know, kind of plateaued a little bit. I I see that in relation to your authorized staff and, you know, considering that you are authorized at four-hundred-and-seventy-six and you're at four-thirty-nine, you're, you know, really stretching it to get the job done. And then on top of that with the COVID absences, I see that there's a CARES Act airflow cost that you are installing. Is that right?
That's correct.
And do you recall the exact cost of that CARES Act airflow?
There's a couple of different aspects to that. I would probably I would rather defer to public properties to give you the exact cost on that.
Okay. We will do that. This is a really good report, and all in all, considering the tough times that we're in, you're doing a super job with remarkably resilient staff. So kudos to you and the people that work there. The report, like I said, just keeps getting better and better. These little tweaks are not meant to be anything other than constructive observations. So thanks for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions for Mr. Meyer? All right. Then thank you, Mike. Thank you. Good report. We do not have need of executive session that I'm aware of for the Board of Corrections, and we are at the end of the agenda. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And I will declare adjourned. We will now convene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Could we please have the roll call, Mr. Bush?
Commissioner Borgerson? Commissioner Boyle?
Present.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Kraft is present virtually, but cannot vote. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair?
Present. Thank you. Item one A is the approval of the minutes from September one, and one B is approval of claims submitted for payment through September fifteenth. What is the pleasure of the board?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle to approve items one A and B. Questions or comments? Then I would call for the vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda, a fairly long. We have items A through O. There are two changes I would like to make to the consent agenda before we consider action. On item A, the very first one under Mr. Doyle's things, the last one in there, item eight, should be on next week's agenda. I would like to strike that from this week's agenda. And then there is a correction in item G three where it says D.R. Anderson is to provide renovation. It should be of the Douglas County Health Department, not Health Center Epidemiology Office.
What's the item?
G three should say Health Department, not Health Center.
Got it.
What is the pleasure of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan to approve the consent agenda with those changes. Questions or comments to anything on the consent agenda? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just as a point of clarification, on item N, under number one, it says contract claim for Alexandra A. Johnson and ROP eight. Is that FOP eight or?
Oh, yes, it should be FOP. So I guess that's another correction to the.
The item J, resolution approved approving the schedule of funds transferred for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, budgeted sixteen million dollars. Mr. Lorenz, just for the public's edification, if you could tell folks what's going on, that's a significant amount of money.
Joe Lorenz, Douglas County Finance Director. This is just a list of the transfers that are contained in the budget that was approved. And these go, these are funds that are transferred primarily from the inheritance tax fund to different operating divisions with within the county. So it's goes to veterans, health service, CMHC, corrections, and among others. But we basically the great the lion's share is coming from inheritance tax, and that's where we use inheritance tax basically to supplement and fund other operations within the county. And that's, I think, several times I've I've mentioned how important inheritance tax is to our financial well-being. And as you can see, that fourteen million dollars is going from the inheritance tax into these different operations of the county. So so that's a lion's. the lion's share. And then there's some other ones regarding 911 communications that come from, they're different funds. They have two different funds, a wired fund and a wireless fund. But this is, we do this every year, and if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Just one. The inheritance tax fluctuates, and we have no control over that. Have you seen a fluctuation up or down in...
It's, you know, it's kind of the law of large numbers, that we have been targeting that in kind anywhere from 12 to 14 million dollars, and it's been pretty consistently in that range in Douglas County.
No real fluctuation, is there?
Not, not, not.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. I assume the maker and secondor of the motion are okay with changing that letter from the FOP, that additional correction. Further questions or comments to anything on the consent agenda? If not, I would call for the vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, I'm gonna take my mask off for this one, there's nobody within six feet. Sigerson's, whoever is here, if you would come down for this, I would, I would appreciate it. While I read a resolution to a old friend.
Yep.
Resolved, whereas Mr. Chuck Sigerson was a longtime political leader in the state of Nebraska who was motivated to help others, and whereas he led the Nebraska Republican Party from 1995 until 2001, and whereas Mr. Sigerson was elected to the Omaha City Council in 2001 and served three terms as a councilman before health problems forced him to resign in 2010, and whereas Mr. Sigerson was credited for being a change agent in the community and having a passion for service, and whereas he loved the city of Omaha, the state of Nebraska, and his family, and whereas Mr. Sigerson died September 6, 2020, at the age of 75 after a decade-long battle with heart issues, and whereas Mr. Sigerson is survived by his wife Elizabeth, son Andrew, and daughter Anthea, now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners that we hereby honor the life of Mr. Chuck Sigerson and recognize his longtime commitment to public service dated this date.
Second.
Commissioner Morgeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you both for being here today. We just felt it was important to recognize Chuck for all that he's done for Douglas County, the city of Omaha, and the state of Nebraska. He really was a pillar during his time of service, of public service, and we appreciate so much and wanted you all to know how much we appreciated him. You know, I do remember, and Commissioner Boyle, I'm sure we'll talk about this, but I actually remember when he was chair of the Republican Party and Commissioner Boyle's wife Anne was the chair of the Democratic Party. And, but I, one of the things that impressed me was there could be civil discourse respectfully.
Yes.
And they made sure of that. And we need so much of that more today than what we have. We need to go back and kind of bring back what that was when Chuck and Anne were at the Helms.
Yeah.
Because they did a fantastic job. And he carried that through during his time on the city council. You can disagree, but it was a respectful disagreement, and you could put the papers down of what you were working on and go to the next one, and still maintain that courtesy and respect. And that's what I really admired a lot, and it was, he was easy to work with. And again, he will be missed, but I wanted to make sure that we were able to recognize him, and thank you for giving him to us for all those years of public service. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, it's, it's always, you can tell, I can tell when there's genuine support and interest in, in doing something on the county board, and that was, there was a scramble to get a resolution on quickly, and I received notice that it's always in the mill and all that. So, and that's always, that's a great sign, and it's absolutely a very subtle tribute to your dad and to your husband. And I tell you, Anne enjoyed so much working with him, and I remember, you know, she was up in Norfolk with Chuck, and they were speaking to a very, very Republican group, you know? And of course, there was somebody by the name of Lewinsky who had kind of messed up the presidential office a little bit, and there's my, my white-haired wife and, you know, not exactly in favor of all that activity, and she's up there and has to defend this. And of course, Chuck is just, you know, you know, giving her all that kind of stuff, which is, was, was his way. It was wonderful. And I mean, it was so much fun to watch that. And, and then you'd see them off at the side talking seriously about some things, you know, and, and just having a very good conversation, because they were good friends, bottom line. And, but Anne had a way with Chuck that was so much fun to watch, and it was almost like, you know, all in the family on that television show where Archie'd say something, not that, not that Chuck was Archie, but that then, how Edith would react, you know? And so Chuck one time made some comment that, you know, Anne was gonna come after, and it was a pretty broad cut at the Democratic Party or whatever it was. And, and so Anne, Anne just said, looked at him, she says, "Oh, Chuck." And he started laughing, which of course blows the whole premise, because he's up there laughing, and, you know, so. But that was his disposition. And I had business before the city council, and I'd appear at that podium, and we had some things, and I got some things passed for some clients and so forth, nothing big. But as I was leaving, Chuck said, "Be sure you tell Anne how I voted." I voted for your, for your plan, Boyle, you know? But he was a great, just a great guy, and I always enjoyed his company as well. I mean, he was just a good, good man. And Mary Anne hit the nail on the head. That's what we need. We're just dying from the lack of civility and being able to, you know, and the county board here is really interesting. There's four Democrats, three Republicans, and we vote unanimously on important issues, and we don't get into party politics. It just doesn't belong in this kind of, you know, Anne always said, "You were elected on a party label." Her father said this, "And once you get there, you serve the people, you don't serve the party." And that was Chuck, and that was Anne. And I have a feeling they're going at it. What do you think? But it's, he was a great guy to work with, and I just can't say enough about him. I loved him dearly, and just a class, class guy. So.
Thank you.
Sigerson name is a very good name for me to remember. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, I would say that Chuck truly epitomized the passion and statesmanship that we should all be striving for.
That's right.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Then could we please vote? And Liz, I mean, you're, you're welcome to respond if you have any, any comments you'd like to make.
Well, I would like to thank you very much for doing this. I mean, it's a great honor for us.
Give your mom the microphone.
I mean, I'd like to thank you very much for doing this. I mean, we'll miss him terribly, but the last 11 years has been a difficult time for him.
Of course.
And he's at peace now.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you.
Andrew?
No, I would just, I would concur that, you know, when I was growing up, it was partisan, but it ended when we were done talking politics. And the last, I don't know, several years, that's just not the way it is. And we just appreciate you guys recognizing him with this today. He loved this city and this community. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a vote?
Motion passes six to zero, and I, I could take a photo if you guys want me to.
That'd be nice.
Okay.
Great.
Whenever we do something that neat, I always just wanna be done. Just quit. Hard to, hard to top that. Next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. Would anybody care to address the Board of Commissioners on anything that is not on the agenda? This is your opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Sullivan of 7748 Western Avenue. I just want to talk generally about COVID on here and how our public officials and health directors and others have addressed the issue. I know that information changes rapidly, and it's easy to have this monopolizer thinking in health, but I have three concerns that I wish to address. Yes, masks can be helpful in certain situations on there. They're an aid or tool. By as merit public policy, there's a lot of collateral damage from it and not as much benefit as you think. First off, less than 1% of the population has active COVID infection. That means 99% of us wearing these masks in public have no infection we could spread even if we wanted to. So that means it really needs, depends on the situation, what you're dealing with. You have to know you're infected. You have to know someone's infected. You have to know that you're around people that are infected and so forth. On the flip side of it, and you'll look at the statistics on this, of the people that are actually getting ill, not all of us are being treated, not all of us are at the same risk. 75% of the people who've died in this county are ages 65 and older. That means there's a co-factor. There's another factor that's involved in getting sick with this virus. We're squandering our youth on, right now. They are more danger at committing suicide than they are getting infected by COVID or getting sick and dying from it. The second part I wish to make, make point of, is we've got so panicked and let the fear run so quickly, we keep changing the goalposts. First, it was to level the curve, flatten the curve. Well, now our hospitals are fine, that we can handle it. We're doing fine. But we're told, oh, we need to bring the positivity down of these tests. And I'm saying, all you're doing is extending the crisis. You're only forcing people to stay home. I mean, if, if I'm told, geez, we have to wear masks, geez, maybe I won't go out. And it's causing sociological and psychological damage. I got neighbors that have not been out since March. And the third part I wish to make is, I really wish we had health people, medical professionals, that were doing the scientific inquiry, because here's one piece of information that keeps being dropped out. The people getting sick with COVID-19 have substantial vitamin D deficiencies. Vitamin D is a very peculiar vitamin. You don't get most of it from diet. You get it from the sun, and the sun is temporal. As days get shorter, the nights get longer, we will all have vitamin D deficiency unless we're taking something that has supplements or is actually fortified with vitamin D. That's something we need to consider. But I've heard no advocacy from the public health community on that fact. And those are the type of things that we need to be looking at. If we continue to make this an unending crisis, we're going to lose our cities. There's no reason for me to go out in Omaha. My friends don't go out. Most of my social organizations haven't met since March. So what am I supposed to do? Why stay in the city? I may as well just go out and farm and retire. So I really wish that we take, think about that comprehensively in regarding public health. We think that the virus is the worst thing in the world. It's going to turn out, it's not just a respiratory disease that we just have to deal with. Historically speaking, for those that are looking forward to a vaccine and think that's going to solve it, I have news for you. We don't have very good vaccines for respiratory diseases. And it's true, the flu vaccine, if you ask your doctor about it, they can tell you. And that's the fact. So we have to look at all the factors involved of how we deal with public health. Screaming, scaring, putting all your eggs in one basket, excuse me, well, the masks are the golden ticket. No, they're just a tool. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. And we aren't supposed to respond, although retiring and farming aren't necessarily the same thing. As a farmer, I would have to make that point. Others, this is the opportunity to speak. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Dr. John Else, a retired university professor and nonprofit executive.
I'm sorry, John, I missed your last name.
Else, like anything else.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
I'm 81 years old, though most people don't recognize that, even my doctors and nurses.
Nice.
I started my career in the civil rights movement in Mississippi in 1963 to 65. Then I came to Omaha in 66. First worked for the DC, the Douglas County Welfare Department, which is an exciting time to be there, and then joined the GOCA staff to create the Greater Omaha Community Action, the first anti-poverty program in Omaha, and then joined UNO and provided leadership under the Provost Gaines in the design and development of the College of Public Affairs and Community Service, and, and bringing the School of Social Work from Lincoln to Omaha, which was no easy task. And I moved to Iowa, and during that time, I spent three years in Southern Africa, Zambia and Zimbabwe, training nonprofit leaders from many African countries. After returning from Iowa, I resigned from the University of Iowa, from Africa, retired, resigned from the University of Iowa, and created a statewide nonprofit business development and loan program for welfare recipients and other low-income populations.
Iowa and Nebraska, which...
Iowa.
Thank you.
In Iowa. It was part of a six-state demonstration program nationally, and we were one of the outstanding performers in that, had over 50% success rate after five years with small businesses. Then I retired in 2005, so 15 years ago, and after my wife's retirement from the International Reading Association in 2009, we moved to Omaha where our children and grandchildren are. In 2018, I began to, as a volunteer consultant with New Life Family Alliance, New Life Family Alliance, NLFA, which is the only multi-tribal South Sudanese organization in Omaha. Omaha has the largest South Sudanese population outside of South Sudan. It is the world capital of South Sudanese. Has 15,000 to 20,000 people, the largest refugee population in Omaha, and another 10,000 to 15,000 in Nebraska. In 2011, most of us weren't aware of that, Omaha was the US center for refugee voting for, in its independence election, and that won by 99% both in South Sudan and in the United States. So South Sudan became independent in 2011. Many Omaha South Sudanese people returned who were well-educated and trained and wanted to help South Sudanese develop. But within, after two years, civil war started in South Sudan. And I should say, South Sudan is an almost entirely Christian country. It was at war for 30 years with the northern part of the country, which is entirely Muslim. The, that civil war broke out in 2013. Most of the Omaha South Sudanese returned because of the conflict there, and though that civil war continues, though, there's been a lot of progress toward peace. The South Sudanese, most South Sudanese parents in... The South Sudanese, most South Sudanese parents in Omaha, and they've been here fifteen to twenty years, grew up in rural parts of the country where there were no schools. Sorry, they can't read or write their own language. And they're afraid to try English. We've tried hard to get ESL classes and we've got some people in it, but they're resistant. They cannot respond to English requests for additional information as they make, they don't understand the applications and they can't make responses to requests for other information by email or phone because they don't understand or they're not able to verbalize the response. We made twenty applications for rental assistance in the first two weeks. And that was five or six weeks ago. One of those twenty was accepted. The other were rejected because of insufficient information. You had to have a signed lease. Most of the people who lived in these apartments ten or fifteen years, they didn't have those leases anymore. So they had to request those from the landlord and the landlords are furious. They had to provide those again. We tried communicating with a human being and it took us weeks to get a telephone number for your online application. And we finally got one and that woman has been fantastic. Her name's Tiffany and she works for your Douglas County General Assistance.
Good.
She's helped us get approval for our person. We have a full-time staff person now who speaks, who's been educated in the United States with master, bachelor's and masters and speaks Arabic, Dinka and Nuer. And he can speak with most of the South Sudanese population. The Board of Directors of New Life Family Alliance is, represents ten or twelve different tribes. And so it's the only one that brings people together. And for, on the whole, they're educated people, many educated here in the United States as Gotoi Dian is. And, but we've had an unbelievable problem applying for rental assistance, as I said. And once we contacted Tiffany, she's been just wonderful, helping us allow our communicator to be the communicator between that office and the clients, which was, before was not allowed. They had to have the client's name and that phone number. And so they had to try to communicate with them, which was impossible. However, as we started resubmitting applications through her and she's clarified things for us, she saw three, at least three of the first applications we got were for mortgages, not for rents. These were habitat houses whose loans were handled by local banks and whose mortgage rates are lower than most rental rates. And she couldn't handle them. I'm sorry. I've talked with several, at least two of your county commissioners last week and complained that mortgages weren't provided. And one noted that they were excluded because some mortgages have multiple funding sources and that would make the situation management difficulty, management difficult. Others also noted various other services that, where we could find assistance for mortgage, for mortgages. I've called several of those and haven't had a response from a single one, not from a single one. So I want to recommend to you that you change your policy and include mortgages in your rental assistance, rental and mortgages. And if you need to put a limitation on it because of multiple funding sources, then put it on. Say we'll, we'll fund mortgages where there's one lender, one mortgage source. That's okay. You don't have to fund all mortgages. You can put a limitation on it. That's legal. I used to teach social policy, incidentally. Finally, let me say that utility assistance has been even more difficult. We got names of six different agencies or more. Only one of those has been responsive to this and that's Heart Ministries in North Omaha. I've had six conversations with Salvation Army, personal conversations, friendly conversations, and they have not been able to make a single change that makes it more accommodating for us to serve non-English-speaking people. We had no response from Together. The DHH office up in North Twenty-Fourth has given us no positive responses. Dollar Energy Process is so difficult, complex, that it's virtually impossible to use. People are desperate. They have had threats of their turnoff of their utilities. One, we got extended for two or three times before on the last day, Heart Ministry came through with a fund for us. So I just want to say we need your help.
Thank you, Dr. Els. Appreciate your.
Thank you, Doctor.
Appreciate you bringing those things to our attention, sir. Would anybody else, Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I, I thought that mortgages, and I told Doctor that I thought they were, that was part of the relief that we could get, but, and Joe said no and stuff, but I did find out that Matthew Kavanaugh is with the Nebraska Housing Developers Association and apparently they can offer some help and I'll try to get that information to you. I don't have an address or a phone number, but I'll get something to you, Doctor. And I just came across your, your phone call. It was four o'clock on, on the ninth and I didn't see it until this morning. I'm not really sure why, but I, I'll check it out. I could blame my new secretary, but it's probably my fault.
Thank you.
I'm smiling. Thank you and thank you for your advocacy. It's very important. You obviously are very committed and that, I congratulate you. That's very wonderful to hear that kind of commitment come through. Thank you, Doctor, very much.
Would anybody else like to share under citizen comments?
Claire, I have. Thank you, Doctor. This is eloquent testimony. I would share with you some information on a hearing that we're having on exactly this topic on Thursday, and I'll give this to you before you leave here today with the Health and Human Services Committee relative to the requirements. We have struggled with this to get this out to as many people as possible and some of the points you bring up are exactly points that we're talking about and will be talking about on Thursday. You can zoom into these meetings. The gentleman that Commissioner Boyle mentioned, Matthew Kavanaugh, is actually my nephew. If you want to follow up with me, I could probably put you in touch with them. And I think representatives of Together are here today and so maybe before you leave, you could meet with them briefly and see. But thanks for bringing this up. I mean, this is exactly the kind of feedback that we need to improve the assistance that we're trying to get out to people and it's a two-way street. So we appreciate your, your constructive criticism and we're going to respond to it. I would hope that you participate in this process going forward and maybe join us on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. The microphone is open for citizen comments.
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three two. Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, thank you, Doctor. But I, I want to revise and extend my remarks from a couple of weeks ago first in regards to a man I met outside on the patio before a meeting. He was sitting around waiting for services from this building. I don't know all the facts, but he supposedly was a homeless vet. I spent the whole day with him. I took him around to different things. I told you about that. What I'm a little upset about is the follow-through by all of the agencies in this county and city that I pay for with my billfold and how it let people down. He was waiting, he had already talked to somebody, I verified this, in Human Relations, the city of Omaha, that was going to get him a ticket home. But over the course of four or five days, he's probably thrown out of two or three different homeless shelters, slept overnight in the bushes not far down from the Salvation Army. After I'd spent a couple of days, maybe six, seven hours each day, still he didn't get any help. I even knocked on the Salvation Army door myself, two different places. I called 911, told them what I was doing, but they didn't want to talk when they did show up. So I don't know whether they were showing up because somebody wanted him arrested or what. But that night, he had to sleep in the bushes just down the street because the police officers and the fire rescue units talked to him for a couple of minutes and drove off. I suppose they didn't have room for all of his personal belongings that were also carted there by one of our temporary shelter community partners. Well, a couple of days later, I find out from an employee of the Human Relations Department, I guess I should not use his name, but I do want to thank him. But I want to say also that of all of those you people and all of the city council people, all of the employees and all of the partners in Omaha, community partners, that spend my money dropped the ball here. It's tomorrow, maybe, that he's back, on his way back here to go to Lincoln for something? What I'm pointing out here is he didn't get the help that he was supposed to get. I even called the VA. Nobody responded. When he finally got a hold of this city employee in the Human Relations Department, there was more than one, actually, that person had to spend six hours of his day and I'm not sure that that wasn't on a Sunday. And out of his own pocket, a bus ticket back home because Omaha didn't help him. Enough on that, but I do thank him and their department, but I wonder why it was so slow on coming about. Next, I want to say I don't think I ever got five minutes of green light. The presentations that went on here this morning seemed like they went on a long time. I don't think I talked that long, but sometimes I lose the green light. The next point is, I sent an email to both bodies yesterday. I want that included in my comments, but I also want these two items included. What's your friend, the?
That's all I have.
From the Alternative Press in Omaha. I get a lot of my information out of there because the Omaha World-Herald doesn't cover it. And then the next last item, although I agree with Mr. Kavanaugh and the gentleman, the doctor that just left, I'm not a professor. But should not that have been a presentation rather than a citizen comment? I'm sorry, don't cut me off. I could prob, I should probably get as much time as he had, but I won't take it. But right there on your, your rules on the front page of this document that you hand out says you will, as a result, you will not respond. But you did. And he had, he went through the yellow light and for quite a long while on the red light. I won't do that. But it's not me that's out of order now, it was you. Thank you.
I'm sorry I let Dr. Els speak past five minutes. Seems like he had a lot of important things to say, though. Anybody else wishing to address this group under citizen comments?
Luis Jimenez, thirty-three oh six Burt Street. There's a few things that I want to talk about, so I'll do it as quickly as I can. I've got pictures here of barricades that are, have been placed on the, on the site around here. And I don't bring this up, I do it because there was rumors going on yesterday about what these were. And I was disappointed. I think that it could have been clearer of, because it was tied. The, some of the rumor was that they were putting this out in anticipation of social, civil unrest, even though that's probably not the case. So I, I don't know who decided to do this. It was probably the Building Commission. They're placed around and by the courthouse. This is the one that I think most people were looking at because of the possibility that the grand jury for the death of James Skirlock is going to be announced soon. It's just better information sharing. I think that the county and, well, this, this place here really needs to put more effort into it and see the efficacy of what they're doing. I think the website is, is good. You know, I can't complain much about the website, but when something like this happens, and I came here yesterday and asked questions and the officers gave me some, some answers. Anyway, there's an article on noise on it, have a read. Also, while I have time, last, last time I was here, Commissioner Boyle said that the commissioners were for mental health and this city council was for jobs. I don't know where he got that from. I, I hope that you clarify that because I think it was off the cuff comment, just to get something through. But I don't think that's grounded in anything that's mandated specifically by law that the county has to focus on mental health and this, while the city focuses on jobs. I can't say that either of those things are done well here. So there's, there's that too. So that, that was very disappointing, Mr. Boyle. Also, there's.
I'll give you.
Okay, I'll let him finish. Luis, finish.
Okay, yeah, and I was gonna say if you need to come over here, you can. Then later today at the city council, there's gonna be a presentation by Ben Gray, I believe, as, as I've been told.
Let's put it on the slides so we can see it.
Oh, okay. There's going to be a march regarding Ed Point Dexter, Twenty-Fourth and Evans. And I'm not going to say much about that. I think Ben Gray is going to comment, Councilmember Ben Gray, later today. But I, for me, it just seems like something that happens, something old and something new. There was, earlier in the summer, there was social unrest and then now there's this refocus on this incarcerated individual. However, I think Preston Love Jr. was talking to Corrections, Nebraska, not Corrections, the Pardons Board back in January. So he's been doing some legwork and I really appreciate what he does. Thank you for your time.
Luis?
Commissioner Boyle.
Yeah, I do want to clarify what I meant. In, the city and the county governments are quite different. The, the city has legislative power, I'm sure you've noticed that, we don't. I mean, I think we have a couple of things we can pass laws on. One of them is truckers downloading or. One of them is truckers downloading or whatever you call it with their brake, Jake breaking, driving down the street and making a lot of noise.
Only on interstates, because that's what the legislature specified, only on interstates.
Only on the interstates. I mean, we, we have, we can't do a mask ordinance. We don't have the authority to do any ordinance. We can't pass anything. The city can. So what I was trying to communicate was that there are divisions and responsibilities in Douglas County, and county government is responsible for delivering services directly to people, like, you know, we do the assessment of property, we do registered deeds, we license cars, we do all this sort of thing, and one of the things that we do is mental health. And we have a full-blown mental health facility over at 42nd and Willworth, and Sherry Glassnap is the director of it, and we have people in and out. I've taken people there who've needed help, and that's the spot where they get a lot of mental health services from Douglas County. The city does not operate that kind of facility. The county does, and the county does not do a jobs program. We don't have a jobs program. The city does, and they have, and I think they're doing really well on it. They've got, you know, they've got a lot of responsibilities. They're trying to get a lot of people employed, but the city does the jobs and we don't, and we do the primary, the mental health work, and the city does not. So that's what I was trying to communicate. And I was listening to Councilmember Jaram talk about what he wanted to do, and as it turned out, with Commissioner Borgerson leading the way, we were able to put $2 million of the CARES funds into mental health operations, and I'm very happy about it. And of course, UNMC is plunging ahead wonderfully with the facility they're opening at 42nd and Davenport, I believe it is, for Douglas, maybe, 42nd and Douglas, and it's going to be a great facility. They had a wonderful presentation. I called the fellow who does the lobbying or whatever you call it for the UNMC and UNO, and they're going to present that to the city council as well, just so they know what's going on, but it's a wonderful mental health operation.
They're gonna present the $2 million to the city council?
I'm sorry, what?
They're, they're going to present the $2 million to the city council?
No, not the $2 million. The, the UNMC is developing a emergency psychiatric unit, so when someone comes in who's having a, they don't go to the ER, they go to this other facility, and it's really very progressive. Commissioner Borgerson again saw this up in Oregon and brought it back to us, and so anyhow, we have divisions of, of authority, so there's not duplication, is what I was saying. I'm sorry I didn't say it clearly.
Okay.
And keep up the good work. I'll try not to run you over next time when I yell your name and you're in the street.
Okay, yeah. The cop was right behind you.
Okay, pal.
You would have been caught.
Thanks.
Thank you. Would anybody else wish to address this group under citizen comments? Okay, then we will move on to the presentations and the CARES Act update. The first item is a resolution allocating $3,581,948.50 in CARES Act funding to the Building Commission for COVID-19-related capital improvement expenses. What is the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve. I don't know if I have a conflict, but I'll make a motion to approve.
You have no conflict, and I will second your motion. Questions or comments? Mr. Cohen is here, if anybody has...
I would just say that these are necessary improvements that need to be made to make the building more effective and to protect the public and the employees as well from the wrath of COVID, so I would, I'm very much in, in support of this.
Thank you. Further questions or comments?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. This is an example of overtime and over budget on the $120 million program that the private corporation is running for the Building Commission across the street. We have a request here for, I think, $3.3 million to replace air and other HVAC apps in the MUD headquarters building, which was part of the $120 million scheme, and now we're putting money into that, which was not part of the bond issue issued by the Building Commission. So this is just another example of the cost overruns that we're already experiencing on this project that the people didn't get to vote on. I would ask if Mr. Cohen could step down for a second, a couple of questions.
Paul Cohen, Omaha Douglas County, Public Commission Administrator. Yes, sir.
Thanks for joining us this morning. I appreciate it. So this building across the street, the old MUD headquarters, is the site that the $3.3 million is proposed to go to. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And could you tell us just briefly what that $3.3 million is supposed to do on that property?
Sure. When, when we purchased the property and, and began to look at it for use as was now proposed to be the, the home of the probation department for the state, it was fine until COVID came along. And then, as the owners of the building, we went to the owner's rep and said, we want the heating and air conditioning, the HVAC system in that building to meet the same standards that we've applied in the buildings that we currently own and operate.
Okay, if I could just stop you there for a second. So the standards that you're talking about, those standards that are, you know, COVID-compliant are in effect in this building and in the Hall of Justice currently?
They're currently in the hall, and they will be when you approve this total motion. We have an additional $211,000 as part of this total that will add the necessary UV lighting to the HVAC in these, in this complex. And all we ask with this project is to do the same thing there that pre-COVID was not part of the project, was never part of the budget, was never part of the conversation until COVID. That's why we've asked for it as part of the CARES Act.
Right, but it's $200,000 to do that here in a much bigger building than the MUD headquarters where it's $3.3 million?
Right, that's because the, the current HVAC system in the MUD building is not large enough or capable of providing the air exchange, the filtration, or the UV lighting that's needed. Our systems already were.
The one in the Hall of Justice?
Hall of Justice and Civic Center and the connector buildings.
Had they been recently upgraded to?
In the hall, we just completed the project, as you're aware, the last project that helped us work on over in the Hall of Justice was completed, and we upgraded the HVAC at that time in the hall.
Okay, and that was a pre-COVID project?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so these are in addition to the funds that we're already expending under the, the bond issue, $120 million to purchase and refurbish that facility and the other facilities proposed for that...
Yes, they are.
Campus. Right. I'm afraid I'm gonna have a difficult time supporting this. It's part and parcel of the bond issue, which has been touted to us all along as on time and on budget, and this is not. This is the latest of proposals, and we've heard them in the private corporations' board meetings to add floors and to increase costs. This building thing that started off in the Chin reported $87 million is now heading north of the bond issue nobody got to vote on, which is supported by tax increase that we'll talk about in a minute, and now we're taking more money than we are spending in occupied buildings like the Douglas County Youth Center, and we'll talk about that in a minute, too, occupied by our children to upgrade the HVAC system. So I'm not in a position to vote for another profit source for the private corporation that's running the scheme across the street.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
The, I wanted to ask you, Paul, on some of the, the other buildings, I mean, this one, this building we're in was not, of course, you weren't here when it was built, but this wasn't built with the vote of the people, was it? Built by the Building Commission?
No, it was not. The...
So I, and I, I probably should talk to Leahy about this, but some of the buildings that we use, they're not rentals, but that we own, you know, the Fitzgerald Home, for example. If we're making changes out there, then to be consistent, you know, people who are opposed to what your, what this subject is today, right now, they should also be opposed to improvements at the Fitzgerald Home as well, because those were not built with, at vote of the people either. And it's, I'm not, I've had serious questions about this whole facility and all the rest of it, and I still do, to be honest with you, but, you know, you gotta face reality, and we need to take care of people and be sure that they're safe. So that's all I would say, but this is, to be consistent, you need to vote, those who have objected to this proposal need to vote no on all the improvements, including the Douglas County Health Center where our aged people are living. You should vote no. You should have voted no on that, and because that wasn't built with a public, a vote of the people either. So, and there are people living there, and so we're trying to improve the air and make it safe. So if you're opposed to making the air safe and all that sort of thing in buildings where we have the elderly living or where we have people incarcerated, go ahead and vote no. Just vote no. So let's be consistent about it. I plan to vote yes. You know, I'm not, I'm not fully in favor of this, but I have to balance these things and make a, a fair decision on what ought to be done, and while I'm not a big fan of this facility, you know, I've talked to you a lot about this, and I'm still edgy about it, but I have to vote yes to make these improvements.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda, may I speak?
Commissioner Kraft? Yes.
Yes, yeah, every opportunity Commissioner Kavanaugh has, he has to overtalk this issue. He's a sore loser. That's all it is, is he's a sore loser, and he refuses to admit that he lost. He lost, and he doesn't understand the process, and he doesn't remember from week to week to week when we've discussed these things. I'm amazed at how much he does not remember, and I'm gonna repeat myself, because he does. I'm amazed at how much Mr. Kavanaugh does not remember from the week before or two weeks before. It just astounds me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Further questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Well, I'm afraid that my friend, Commissioner Boyle, might be conflating some things because what was done at 156 in Maplewood, he calls it Fitzgerald Home, the West Campus, was subject to a vote of the people, and he should remember that. The, the other facilities that we have occupied by people under our care, like the Douglas County Health Center and the Douglas County Youth Center, are under our direct purview. This scheme across the street is run by a private corporation through the Building Commission, and I understand that you've had reservations about this, but your reservations always end when it comes to funding this scheme, and this is just the latest addition to a non-voter-approved scheme to build something that is, in part at least, not necessary. It has nothing to do with the people under our care, the Douglas County Health Center, the Douglas County Youth Center, Douglas County Correction Center. They're totally different things. This is something that was purchased along with the OHA building, and I don't see any appropriation of $3.3 million to upgrade the HVAC at the OHA building that was picked up and then forgotten as part of this scheme, but this is just, you know, additional cost overruns to a project that was already a great profit source for the private corporation that people associated with it that are running up our taxes, and we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to the tax question later on the agenda.
Thank you.
Can I join me?
I'm, I'm gonna respond first, Commissioner Kraft, if I may. The decision has been made. We bought the building. We're gonna move probation into it. We just heard Mr. Meyer saying how helpful probation has been to him in addressing some of his issues. We have a legal obligation to provide probation with space where they will be interviewing children, lots of people that aren't in there by choice. We have an opportunity with CARES Act funding to take a building with what was inadequate heating and ventilation system pre-pandemic. It is no longer safe. It is no longer adequate. Before we put people in it, we have an opportunity here to make it a safe building. I am sorry that politics rears its ugly head again when all we're trying to do is make a safe building for probation. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and, and I heard the scheme, the word scheme, at least five times in that comments by Mr. Kavanaugh. I hate to repeat myself, but because he repeats himself so many times, it becomes obnoxious, and I think that's what he wants to be, is obnoxious. This is an add-on, an unforeseen, and it's not going to cause a cost overrun because this is not part of the initial cost, and it's the CARES Act funding. And this scheme has been used by Lincoln, by the state of Nebraska, and by U N M, the university system, where you can, and, oh, by the way, the federal government on the building of the Veterans Administration add-on. That same scheme got them on time and under budget.
Yeah, that's it.
So, yeah, I hate to repeat that word so many times, but I think that's the only way that Mr. Kavanaugh can understand anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Further questions or comments to the motion before us?
I have a comment, I have comments. Luis Jimenez, 3306 Burt Street. And you know what, Mr. Kraft? I want to respond quickly. If it's a scheme, it's, it's fine calling it a scheme. It could be a good scheme or it could be a bad scheme, and what we're saying is this is a bad scheme. It's unfortunate that you still think that you guys were the only ones in the discussion and that the various individuals in Douglas County that came out against this are, are forgotten. Well, hopefully, they're not forgotten. They were out protesting, some of them were, last, last week. If that's how you think, Mr. Kraft, then it's good that your retirement is nearing. Here are some pictures of the, of the individuals that were protesting.
What were you protesting?
The construction of juvenile detention downtown. Your project, the scheme. The, they're protesting, they, the city, the county was using a nonprofit to get bonds instead of the vote of the people, to issue the bonds. There's, there's been opposition every step of the way, and it seems like Mr. Kraft forgot.
Could, could I ask that we bring this back to the topic of ventilation system for the MUD building, please? That's the, the decision before us.
Well, it's gonna be part of the complex. It's not just being used to air the building, you know, it's gonna be housing the, you know, legal services. The, the judges are gonna have their own building.
That's a different building.
Okay, well, if, Mr. Duda, if you want to editorialize my comments, we can keep doing this.
I would prefer if we could talk about the subject at hand. That's all I'm asking.
Okay.
The subject at hand is, do we put the new CARES Act money into a new heating and air conditioning system for the building that probation will soon be occupying?
Well, to take precautions, it, it would make sense, however, people don't want that complex operating, especially when you add juvenile detention to the mix.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm not done. I still have time, please. I'm, I'm in minutes, right, with the green lights?
Nobody has cut you off.
Well, I had some thoughts. I didn't write them down. The ventilation, great, buy your equipment, get your options going. It's gonna get somebody rich anyway, even with these new designs, somebody's getting rich off of this. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
First of all, were leases based presently for probation? Am I correct?
You are correct.
Which I know the answer to it, but I want to make sure that you correct me.
Yep.
Secondly, and I know we have Paul here and Jerry Leahy, if they want to correct me, I'm appreciative of that. The second part of this is, the plan is to move them into the MUD building. Because of the COVID virus, we are trying to make sure that we have a good air handling system in that building, and they brought to our attention that we should change that now before moving the probation office in there. And if I'm not correct, Jerry, I know you like to respect all commissioners, don't worry about correcting me or Paul Cohen, who's with the Building Commission. That's what we're talking about, period. We're not talking about some scheme or underlying whatever. We're talking about one item. We're talking about one item, if I'm correct again. Yet we have to get sidetracked, and I was appreciative that Commissioner Kavanaugh didn't use the word kitty gel again, which I've had the parents calling me about. And we do have a lot of support to have it downtown, as does St. Paul, Minneapolis, and other cities that I've visited, Memphis, Ne, uh, and some others. So, Jerry, you're welcome to correct me on that or whatever you wanna say.
Good morning, Jerry.
Jerry Leahy, public property. Commissioner Morgan, you're right on about the lease for the probation office. It's about $16,000 a month. It's been a plan all along to put them, uh, with the purchase of the MUD property and the 1723 building, to put them into that building to eliminate that lease. I believe there are 80 officers that would be working in that building that are now in the Keyline Building. And to have another point of view about this whole discussion, if I may, I was involved, as you know, when we purchased the MUD property, along with the 1723 building. And, uh, Jeff McGill and a couple others that toured the 1723, we had concern of the HVAC system. But we were pretty much of the opinion that we could get another, probably 15 years out of that existing system. So now what you have is a project with the courthouse, tower, the annex, with a brand-new design, modernized HVAC system. You have a detention center with a new design, modern system. And you have 1723 with a, uh, in comparison, absurd compared to the other two. So, the opportunity was there. It is CARES Act money. As you know, when I was here for Health Center HVAC request, talked a lot about ventilation. Since that time, I can't tell you how many times I've heard, uh, and read articles on ventilation and COVID and CARES Act money to correct deficiencies. So, that's my other point of view to try to clarify.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Jerry.
If that helps.
Yeah, it does. I, I believe it does. Thank you.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. There was a phrase mentioned a little bit earlier about non-voter approved. This whole CARES thing is pointing out one thing on a national basis. There's an awful lot of people and government bodies that are rushing in there to get money from the federal government, which is out of my pocket, for this and for that. This particular item is something that should have been voted on by the people of the county. Never had an opportunity. Probably won't get to. I don't know, couldn't hear everything he just said, but I think he referred to the 1700s or what? If he was talking about the revolution?
The, the, the topic is a new air system.
Excuse me, you didn't call him out of order, so don't call me out of order.
I'm not calling you out of order. I'm asking you to stay on topic.
My topic is on topic. When you go around the public, deny their votes, you are usurping the Constitution and your sworn duty. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments about a heating and air conditioning system for the 1723 building? Your final comment, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah, just for Mr. Cohen, a quick question.
Paul Cohen, Omaha, Director of Public Building Commission.
Thanks again for being here.
Yes, sir.
So, when this property was originally acquired and the plan was to utilize it for now its probation, but it was gonna be utilized for some office. As a matter of fact, the purchase agreement says we gotta use it for 50 years in its current form. Wasn't there a plan to refurbish the interior, including the HVAC? Or was it just gonna be the old building?
No, the plan, there was a plan to refurbish the building to convert it to office space, and we're still doing that. But the HVAC, as Jerry pointed out, the HVAC was adequate. So, except to change some of the ventilation, um, systems in the, in the ceiling and, and change some of the controls, there was very little that was planned to be done to the HVAC system.
So if we look back at what was presented to you by the private corporation for a build-out on that particular property, we won't find a replacement of the HVAC?
No, sir, you will not.
Okay. And how much was going to be dedicated of that original number of 120 million to ventilation in the MUD headquarters?
Can't break that out for you, sir. I can tell you that the total valuation of the, um, refurbishing of that building was set at 3.8. That would include all the offices and, and replacing some of the, uh, parts of, of the building that needed refurbishing to accommodate some of the offices and refurbish the office space.
Okay, 3.8 million to refurbish the entire building, and now an additional 3.3, basically doubling the price of, of refurbishing that building, rough math. I, I appreciate your candor. Thank you.
Sir.
Are you through? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Commissioner Duda, trying to bring it back to the subject, and that's, that's really what it is for me, because what this comes down to is that we are voting today whether to provide a safe facility. This, this is going to be built. I mean, I've, I've brought up and, uh, kind of rocked the boat on, we ought to tear that building down is what we ought to do, but all we have to do is save the shell. Uh, but I don't think it's that cool, anyway. I think it oughta go, but we already had some roundabouts with that. But the issue before us today is, we're, we are going to be remodeling that building for the use of young people coming in and probation, coming out of the Keyline Building into that facility. And the, the question is, should we provide clean air and safe air for the children and for the parents and for the attorneys, for whoever's there in probation and all the rest of it? Should we provide clean air or not? So if you're against clean air for kids, vote no. I mean, I'm not enthused about this project, but I'm voting yes, because the majority has already spoken several times. And to clarify on this, a vote of the people is not required under state law. The very building we're in, I don't know how your father voted when he was on the county board. Maybe he voted no for this building. I'm not sure. But this building we're in was not voted, was, was not voted on by the people. And the Thomas Fitzgerald Home, when it was built, my reference was, that was not voted on by the people. So, you know, to, to set this up as some kind of a scheme and something sneaky, it's been very public. I'm not a fan of the nonprofit group either. So, I mean, there are questions that I've had, but I have to come to grips with the majority. And I'm not in the majority on this. But I am on the clean air for the kids, so I'm gonna vote yes on this. That's the question.
Thank you. I don't say this often, Commissioner Boyle, but that was well put.
Thanks. I'm gonna have to get a copy of that.
Further questions or comments? Then I would like to call for the vote on A1, please.
Just wanna note on the agenda request form, uh, there's two different amounts listed, so folks should disregard the amount for 412,000. It's the 3.518 million, so.
3.581.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no. All other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. Item two, DC CARES Rental Assistance Program update. In consideration to increase the maximum rental assistance award per household to, to $7,000. Melissa? Melissa Seawick, our General Assistance Director. Who thought she had a low-profile job until the last few months?
I'd like to just thank you, Melissa. I've seen your emails and everything you've done, and really appreciate your calling people back. And I know Commissioner Boyle commented to you also. Thanks for what you're doing very, very much.
All right, Melissa Seawick, Director of General Assistance. So first, I'm just gonna provide you all with an update as far as the program goes. And then I will, um, talk about the possible increase to the maximum award. And this has also been emailed to all of you. So just as a reminder, Douglas County CARES Rental Assistance Program provides funds to assist the low-to-moderate income households that are at or below 100% AMI with unpaid rent due to COVID-19-related hardship, and the maximum benefit is $4,000. We have received 2,941 valid applications as of yesterday. 2,153 landlords have completed their portion of the application. A little over 1,500 of, of the applications have been processed. And we have our hands on 89% of those that are still in process. So, out of the 569, we have 89% of those that we are still working on. We're still awaiting the landlord responses from 788 applications. That's about 27% of the applications we have received. Again, we are reaching out to landlords that, um, it is just either a finger flub in what the email address said, or if the tenant and landlord said the same, had the same email address, we're reaching out to those folks to try to get it clarified so we can get them into the system and have those completed. Overall, I am impressed with it only being 27% that we're still waiting from, just knowing our program and knowing some of the responses. We're really trying to push tenants to communicate with their landlords ahead of time, making sure that they have that correct, um, contact information, but also let them know that when they get this email, it's not just spam or something like that. They're aware that this, the tenant is applying for the program. The average monthly request for run assistance we're receiving is $25 to $2,600. And the average monthly, um, request has been $861.66. Um, as far as the months being requested, and this is for cases that we have currently processed or are being processed, 24% April forward, 20% from May forward and June forward, 19% for July forward, 13% August forward, and 4% September forward. And we will be opening up October assistance, um, by the end of this week. As far as our denials, we've had 976 applications that have been denied. 25 of those have just been for being over the 100% AMI for the household size. 842 are for insufficient documentation and/or unable to verify financial hardship. 109 unable to verify financial hardship due to COVID-19. That's typically just that they are over income, um, or not over income, but they just had, did not have a financial loss at all between, um, before COVID and after COVID. Applicants can reapply for assistance, and most of the initial denials have reapplied. So I'm hoping I will come back at the end of the month to report again on this program, and I hope at that time that we have the report that shows out of all of the folks that have that initial denial, how many of them have since come back and applied and been approved, because I don't think, um, so I don't think, I know that the 976 applications, that's not an accurate gauge of how many people have been since been applied, approved assistance. As far as approvals goes, we've had 608 approvals, and we've had, that has totaled up to just over 1.1 million dollars in assistance that's been authorized. And that's been authorized in, um, seven weeks from the first time we have submitted our, our initial payment. Approval amounts have ranged from $25 to $4,000. And then 18% of applications, um, their awards were between $3,000 and $4,000. And I just wanted to note that, um, based on my request of, um, increasing that amount to $7,000. Um, we have probably right now about 4% of people that have already maxed out on the assistance of $4,000. And the remainder of those are probably about a payment away, depending on what their monthly payment is. The average assistance being approved is $1,833.83. We continue to look at this program, their eligibility, the documentation required, and the ga, the grant amounts that, um, we are giving. And we're updating them, um, as needed and as, as necessary, based on what's coming in, what we're seeing. We're also looking at what other counties and cities are doing, um, throughout this entire process, and we continue to do so. I, again, looked yesterday. We are one of, um, we offer one of the, the highest financial grants out of any city and any county. I found one, um, city that is doing a higher grant than we are, based on our $4,000 eligibility. We have one of the highest, we go up to the highest AMI. Most of the cities and counties go from 50 to 80% max, um, AMI. And as far as the documentation that is required, we align with most, um, of the cities and counties. The ones that we don't align with are because they're asking for more documentation. They're asking for six months of bank statements. They are asking for six months of pay stubs. None of that, we, which we are doing. So, um, and there's been things that we have changed just along the process regarding our applications, how we ask questions. Then also, it used to be that when we initially started the program, that you had to provide income verification for, before COVID, considered March 17th, and then after COVID. We're seeing that, um, obviously, some people are having difficulty getting that, um, income requirement before March, that, um, whether that's a pay stub or bank statements. But we're also seeing that there is, there's people that have been unemployed, but have since got employment post-March, but then have now been affected by COVID. So we have kind of changed those requirements, that they just have to provide one month's proof of financial impact, um, before COVID and after. And there's really no dates attributed to that, other than being between March and the current date. Um, and then we're also looking at households that, um, their children are participating in e-learning, because we're seeing a lot of individuals that have either had to quit their job or they are working one or two days, um, less a week, due to the fact that they have to be home with their children. And so we are, um, looking at that as well, where they're just attesting that they have a child that's participating in e-learning, um, and providing us with their financials. And that is also, um, eligibility that we are looking at. And then again, for information on our website, it's www.douglascounty-ne.gov. And then our help desk line is 402-444-7230. That's my phone number, 7232. And so I just wanted to point out, um, I, you know, sent it in an email to you all, but, you know, Tiffany and myself are pretty much the main ones that are overseeing this program, um, internally in our department, and we are easily taking 100 calls, um, a day, just ourselves. Not that, not coming through the help desk, where we are talking to landlords, we are talking to tenants. And overall, the message we're hearing is very positive. The folks that have been denied for incomplete, um, information or insufficient information, we're able to provide them exactly what they need, and they have then turned around and submitted it, and they are getting approved. We have some cases now that we are caught up, that are getting approved, um, within a day or two of them submitting their applications. Um, and then we also are working on clearing out some of these, um, applications that have been sitting there for probably about a month or so, that we have been trying to communicate with to get the information that we need, that they're just not replying or just not submitting it. So we're trying to close that out in hopes that they will turn around and then reapply and provide us with the information that they need. Um, and there are some organizations, um, that we're working with one-on-one, like Dr. Ellis's, um, organization, where we are learning of a barrier with, where they maybe be able to speak, um, English, but as far as reading and write, it's, writing, it's not, um, it's not proficient. So, once we're aware of that, we are asking that those organizations give us a list of those individuals. And so we are CCing them in all email communications, so they can help follow up on all of those. Um, we do ask in our application process if they will need a translator, if we do further communication. Um, majority of those are selecting that they do not, and so we're basing it off of that, and then coming to find out afterward, communicate with these organizations, that there's stuff that we can do to kind of help that, that process, and which has, we have been successful with. Um, and we'll continue to do so. So, I am very proud of what we've been doing. Again, over a million dollars has gone out in seven weeks since this program has been implemented, and... And, do I cancel? And that's kind of unheard of in our community. And we'll continue to go ahead and distribute the funds. We're monitoring, you know, what else is going on in the community. We are reaching out to school systems, all of the different nonprofits, for-profit organizations, trying to get the message out as clearly as we can. I don't think that we are missing populations, large populations, that people just don't know about our program. If you look at nationally where we're at, Omaha, Nebraska, and just Nebraska as a whole is in a lot better state than other states nationally. So I think that is reflecting, based on this assistance program and the funds that are going out. And then lastly, we're communicating with the utility programs as well. If somebody is eligible and approved on our program, they will be approved on the utility side as well, based on the requirements. We've been meeting weekly with them, just to try to talk about any problems or concerns that we are seeing, and if there's anything that we can do differently. Based on our program eligibility and our program requirements, there is not anything else we can do in order to make it any easier for anybody, to simplify the process without risking not being in compliance with the CARES funding source. So we're confident in what we're doing. We're confident that the message is getting out. Again, $1.1 million has already gone out into the community, and we're hearing the positive messages day in and day out about how grateful that the constituents are that you guys authorized this funding to go out to the community. That said, we are seeing that some people are hitting that cap already of that $4,000, where they just are still not employed, or they had employment, and then now with the schools back in session, that they still have some needs for that rental assistance. So we are asking that the maximum increase, the maximum amount of rent being authorized is $7,000 per household. We're looking at an average amount of $1,000 being allocated each month to a household, and we are looking from April to October, so that $7,000 amount. So that's what we are hoping to do. If that is approved, what we are going to do is go back and communicate with all of those folks that may have not gotten, or maybe they just got a partial payment, or they didn't need ongoing, they were not eligible for ongoing assistance because they reached that cap, to see if they need assistance still, and then go ahead and issue assistance for those individuals.
Thank you, Melissa. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I say this every time you show up, but you're doing a remarkable job, just absolutely. And you, how long have you been in the job? I mean, as head of the director?
Just over, just over a year.
Okay, well, this is really incredible. You took this over, and you had big shoes to fill. And size 12 shoes, what size? No, I'm just joking. But you've really done a terrific job. Even the presentations that you make are very readable, and, you know, you're cheap. I like that you use both sides of the paper, that's good. But I do have some questions about it, and I want to ask you, are the requirements put together by Deloitte, is that what happened? They said you have to do all these things, is that where it came from?
No, they have advised us of certain specifications, just dealing with the CARES Act. But when we were looking at what other cities and counties were doing, when we researched what is required for this grant, that's where they have all come from. So it's not because of Deloitte said one thing or another.
Okay. So how would it be possible for you to, the reason I ask is that I see, you know, there, some of the applications that have been denied, those are the ones I always look at naturally. And I get concerned about 842 insufficient documentation, and then 109 unable to verify financial hardship due to COVID-19. What is that last thing? How do you verify financial hardship due to the virus? How's, what do you need to see?
So in order to determine a financial hardship, we are asking for one month's income before you've had that hardship, and then one month's income after. So that can be in the form of pay stubs, direct deposit, unemployment benefits. And like I said, that number of 108, that is due to, we got the appropriate documentation, but based on that, there was no hardship due to COVID-19. They were either making the same amount or more with the information that they provided.
All right, well, is there any way that you could, it seems to me that, I mean, if I were there, I don't know what the nonprofit agencies do, they're not, I don't know that they're under any federal problem or anything, trying to verify their people's ability to pay and whether they're being honest. But I guess what I'd like to see is, you know, asking for copies of the money orders, or if they have a checking account, showing proof of what they paid for rent. And then, you know, or do you have income now? Just a couple of things. And I, having the landlord, it seems like landlord providing forms has been kind of a stumbling block. Maybe I'm incorrect on that. I did send the name of Gene Echol, who's an attorney who is very involved in the other side of the equation of evicting people. He represents landlords. But he stopped me one day when I was trying to do something about the evictions downstairs. And anyway, I talked to him briefly, and he's offered to help to try to intervene with landlords and try to get them, somebody not cooperating, try to talk them and get them to provide. So anyway, anything I can do to help, I hope you'll give me a call. I'm very impressed with how you've responded. You were responding to me before you started all this, so I don't know where in heaven you came from, but you just dropped right down to us, and we appreciate your work and your effort. The other thing I really appreciate very much, and this is a compliment, you have the right attitude about people who need help, and that's so important. If you are cold or callous, not seeing the problems of people, you're in the wrong place. You are in the right place, because you have what I affectionately call a bleeding heart. That's what I am, too. You try to help people any way you possibly can. And so anyway, I appreciate your effort, appreciate your attitude, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you. And I wanted to point out, as far as the landlords go, the only red documentation that we require from them is that W-9. And then also, just for them to attest to how much rent is owed. And then what, if there's any late fees attributed to that. So there's nothing beyond that that we really ask of the landlords. So majority of it does fall on the tenant. But again, the only thing that we are asking from the tenant is, we ask for a copy of their ID, their identification, and then proof of income. So like you said, that can be in the form of bank statements, it can be like via direct deposits, pay stubs, a letter from their employer. We accept a wide range of documentation. And then, and that helps us determine, obviously, what that household's AMI is, and if they have been negatively impacted by COVID.
Are you familiar, have you, did I send you any information on Lending Link?
No.
Okay, well, I need to do that, because I discovered, I called Roger Garcia and said I needed his help, and he got a coffee, and I said, I know, he used to be on the group of helping immigrants come into immigrant center. And so he went, he came back, he called me, and I had lunch, we had lunch, the three of us. And there's a fellow named Daniel Padilla, and he worked for 23 years at the First National Bank. He was recruited to run this lending agency that frankly competes with the people who charge 400%, and he charges 5%. And they've had something like 1,200 loans made in six weeks. They also have an angel grant system. If someone can't make a payment, they can also do grants. I'll get the information to you, because there are, there's help out there, and it's really remarkable. It's being funded by some of the usual suspects that are so generous to our community. So it's really a neat operation. I'll get it to you.
Okay, great.
So people that don't qualify can possibly go there.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you. I just have to add, I've had several constituents, people, whatever, just write directly to me looking for help, and boy, all I do is forward the emails to Melissa, and she gets them taken care of immediately. She has been wonderful to work with from our perspective.
Yep.
Commissioner Morgan.
So you mentioned the outstanding job that's going on here compared to other cities. You mentioned there was one city, what was the city that you said was doing so well?
I don't recall, because I've looked at so many. But there was only one that I found that is authorizing a higher amount of assistance than we do. But they're monthly, they have a monthly cap. So it was a four-month max. So technically, we might still be better than them, depending on how you look at it. But we, I definitely think, nationally, our general assistance program, what the county offers, it far exceeds what other counties' general assistance programs are doing. And I think that also reflects with this general, this rental assistance program is what we're seeing different counties and different cities doing. It's a lot simpler, and it's a lot more assistance that's being provided.
And so you're comparing it with all cities, counties?
Right.
Whether it's San Diego County or whatever?
Yeah, we're not looking at sizes. We're just strictly looking at the cities and the counties, absolutely.
And the real credit to you is what you said earlier about taking these calls, that you yourself have taken, you know, whatever, if it's up to 100 calls a day, you know, and the difference. And that's really made the difference. And I don't think you have a bleeding heart, but I think you have a tremendous passion about what you're doing, and that's what life is really about.
That's a bleeding heart.
In the job you do. I know that Commissioner Boyle does have the passion of trying to always do the right thing. I don't think he has a bleeding heart either, but he, he's okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, PJ.
Commissioner Rogers.
Melissa, hey, so I want to be able to correlate Slide 4, right? So does Slide 4 mean that of the 1.1 million that has been approved for rental assistance, that 24% of it was given out in April, 20 was given out in May? Am I reading that right?
No, that, so for the months assistance requested, that is being, that's what's requested from the applicant on their application. So 24% of the applications we had processed were requesting April forward.
Okay.
And then, look, 20% May forward. That said, when we are finally communicating with the landlords and the tenants, that does not always match up. We're finding that a lot of people are just clicking all of the boxes that are available, and then when we are processing, they only need one or two months of assistance. So that is, and so that's another thing that we're hoping to get documentation and get reports on, to show what specific months we are paying for folks. We're seeing a lot of stuff now come in specifically for September and newer applications, where they had not applied for previous assistance. And I'm attributing that to the, and in that additional unemployment, where people were able to pay for their rent, and then now they're not able to do so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. It would be, oh, Commissioner Burris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to extend my thank yous to Melissa as well. I mean, just the comment you made at the end, in seven weeks, we, $1 million has gone out to assistance to our Douglas County residents, and that's big. I don't believe the program struggled to get started, because it was off and running with a few weeks when we approved the use of this program. It, nothing's ever perfect, and I think you've proven that as you've gone along, we've tried to fix what we don't think is working, or that needs to be changed. And that, I think, is, again, kudos to you as the leader, and kudos to the staff who are working on these applications. It can't, again, all fall on those who are processing the applications. There has to be some ownership of it, of those who are applying as well. And I think you've proven that you have taken this and told the staff that we're going to work these, and we're going to work them so we don't have to deny them. Unfortunately, there are times when we have to. But again, seven weeks and $1 million gone out in assistance is pretty impressive. And again, thank you for your leadership on this.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this.
And this is great, going from 4,000 to 7,000. I think it's something that we talked about, you know, earlier, when we came to the realization that the program was getting set up four months into the pandemic, and it had a four-month limitation on it. It was apparent at that point that we would have to continue it, and we have to the end of the year. It's also apparent that the original 4,000 was going to be inadequate. And so continuing that in a similar fashion makes all kinds of sense, and I support that. It's a good example of what we were talking about with Dr. Else regarding the back and forth of this conversation. I mean, this thing isn't perfect, and we're building it as we go, but we're trying to make it as good as we can. And you see these adjustments made along the way are attempts to do that. So these are responses to the needs of the community. This is one of our best CARES program, because it's direct assistance to people affected by COVID and need in our community. That's the highest and best use of COVID dollars. So what we're trying to do are these fine tuning of it, and that relies a lot on people's input from the outside world, saying, this isn't working, or this could work better, or this is inadequate, and this needs to be increased. This is a response to that. Obviously, the original four months was an inadequate period of time, and that's now been continued to encompass the entire year. Obviously, the initial $4,000 was inadequate, and that's being upped to 7,000. The problem that you see before you is, we have way more applications denied than approved. And I'm glad to hear that we're going back and looking at those and seeing how we can get aid to people who may have had just difficulty in the application process. We also have 1.1 million to date expended out of 10 million. And that's going to be interesting going forward, how we get that amount of a balance of about $9 million out to people by the end of the year, because this has to be expended, as CARES requires, by the end of the year. So I understand what you're doing here today, and I applaud the work that general assistance has been doing, and the flexibility that you've shown, meeting the needs of the applicants, which is the highest goal of the project, so that we can get through this pandemic as well as possible, using the resources that we have. The numbers that we see, I think, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, have been going up every month in terms of applications, is that right?
As far as the applications received, or?
Yes.
Absolutely, I mean, absolutely, people are applying every day. So our numbers are going to increase. And we're having, like I said, as far as our September data, we're seeing a lot of unduplicated apps for September, that they are new applicants that have not applied previously, that are now applying for September for the first time.
That's excellent, thank you. Thanks for the good work you're doing. I know that it's a struggle, and if you need more resources, you know, handling 100 calls a day has got to be taxing, you know, please let us know. I mean, the General Assistance Department didn't start this year set up to deal with this kind of a load. And so obviously, if you need some more help, let us know.
I think, you know, we're handling it fine. I like that we're able to talk to landlords and talk to tenants about their specific issues, questions, concerns. Again, we just want to get the, continue to get the message out and have it, we want, I know it's not always going to be a positive spin, some of the stuff that we've been hearing is not always positive, but I think it is an amazing program that's being offered, that, you know, you guys have approved for the county. I think what we have done is amazing. We continue to adapt our program as we're seeing, as we see fit. And also, like, your comment regarding the four months and then the $4,000. When we initially started this program, we were hearing from, you know, different organizations that there was a $35 million rental need, and we were seeing very high figures. And the thought of keeping it at $4,000 in four months was more so that we can reach more individuals, rather than having it be, you know, $9,000, $10,000 cap, and only helping a select few in Douglas County, kind of like a first-come, first-served. We're seeing that the need is not as great as has been said. And so we can open it up, or we're able to assist the individuals that have applied with more assistance, which is a great thing. And we're going to continue to approve that assistance through the end of the year. So we're, you know, we're confident what we're doing. It is a grind, but it's been very fulfilling, and I'm really proud of what we're doing.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to a robust discussion on this, particularly regarding these qualifications and what we could do, maybe to make it easier for people to apply and be approved on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted, Commissioner Boyle made a comment of asking where Melissa was, where she came from, trajectory. I just wanted to put on the record that she's a great example of somebody born and bred within the department from her days, and I don't know if it was a community specialist under Jan Pelletier, to the elevation to deputy to now. So all of that good work is credited to the development and then the intentional track they put her on. So I just want to add to that, and add to her great job, and note that trajectory for you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Burris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Melissa, when you were talking about the landlords, are we talking a big number or are we talking a handful, a dozen?
As far as?
Like that you're still trying to get information from or that aren't being cooperative?
So, as far as the ones that are not cooperating with us, though, those are very, very few. Some of it is just kind of a misunderstanding of where the funding is coming from. Um, I've had a couple of those conversations just this week where they, they think it's something else. So, it's just clarifying that. There are some landlords that don't want to accept the assistance because they want to be able to evict that tenant. But for the most part, they're willing to work with us. I think the biggest thing is just being communicated or, oh yeah, I did see that email, but I didn't know what it was about, um, or I just thought it was spam. And so, that's why we continue to say, like, tell the tenants, communicate with them, let them know. Um, and we're having a lot of tenants that say, my landlord said they haven't got anything yet, so then we're reaching out to the landlords and we're ceasing the tenant. So, it's linking that, that communication. So, um, like I said, I know to somebody maybe who's not involved in, um, this type of assistance, 27% may seem like a lot. And it definitely is for those folks that have not had their landlord, uh, submit their, their proof yet. But I am really impressed that it is that low, um, of a landlord respond, that have not responded. And also, there are some tenants who have since reapplied and so they have those two applications sitting in our thing. One has marked as submitted and that means the landlord has not completed their portion, but then that second application, the landlord has submitted it. We go through as best as we can to mark duplicates, um, but when we're looking at almost 3,000 applications, it gets kind of difficult to do that, especially, um, if we don't have key things to look at as far as email, um, to cross-reference. But, um, again, we continue to get it out there. I don't feel at all that there's just landlords that aren't aware of the program. There are some that we have worked with different organizations where they want a point of contact because they haven't filled out that application and we're able to provide that to them. We're reaching out to them, um, to find out if there's a reason because sometimes it's just a miscommunication. Sometimes when we call the landlord, we find out a lot more, um, of the story of why they're not filling it out and they're not going to. But thankfully, most landlords want their money, um, and they wanted it yesterday. So, they are willing to work with us and have been great to work with. Most of the tenants, the same thing, they're just super grateful for the program. A lot of them, and we get a lot of the back-to-back-to-back calls, people are just stressed out, they're concerned, they're scared because they don't want to be evicted. So, we're also providing people with assistance to, um, legal aid, but then also with the moratorium through the CDC, trying to get them to fill that out, um, to prevent evictions throughout the, the remainder of the year, but also knowing still pie for this program, still have us assist you because those, that rent is going to come due, those late fees are going to come due. And if we can't assist trying to get them, um, linked up with a different organization, that does.
Well, and the last thing I'm glad you brought up about the, um, uh, prior to COVID and just again, for clarification, these dollars have to be COVID-related.
Yes.
So, we understand that there are rent burdened individuals in our county prior to COVID. Um, and they may not qualify for these funds. And again, this program that we, we put in place for, again, COVID-specific, isn't a long-term fix for the problem that we have in this county with rent burden individuals. So, I think that when we first start talking about it, I think it was thrown out there that this was the end-all, be-all, it was going to take care of everybody, it was going to be, you know, this big, like, $38 million expenditure for individuals in our county and that just isn't the case. So, again, we have specific requirements we have to follow. And again, just short-term, not long-term, we got work to do.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, um, we don't have a motion before us, but I would entertain one. All right, all right, so a motion by Commissioner Kavanaugh, second by Commissioner Boyle. Further comments or questions to the motion? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Item three, under the CARES Act update, is approval to allocate 1,203,272 of CARES Act funds to the Douglas County Youth Center for COVID-related projects. Okay, I will second that. Questions or comments to the motion? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
To relate back to what we talked about for the MUD building where you approved 3.3 million dollars to redo their HVAC so the kids could have clean air, um, there's no money for HVAC upgrade at the Douglas County Youth Center, which currently has and will for the foreseeable future, somewhere between 70 and 80 kids staying there every single night. Now, the MUD building is not going to have any kids staying there overnight and it's not even going to come online probably for a year or two. But tonight, and every night during this pandemic, kids are going to sleep at the Douglas County Youth Center where you're not spending anything on an HVAC upgrade. Just a point to show you the disparity in interest between the, uh, scheme across the street and the kids that we actually have under our care at 42nd and Lower Street. I support this and I'm just pointing out that there's a vast disparity in what we're doing.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Then I would call for the vote, please.
Uh, Commissioner Morgan, how do you vote? Okay, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are two items that we're not ready for today, I believe. Items B and C, the report from, uh, the purchase, purchasing agent on emergency purchases that haven't occurred yet. And so, those two items will come back to our agenda next week. Which brings us down to public hearings and, and I've been keeping the Carl's waiting so long, I'm going to move you to the head of the list, uh, for public hearings. So, next on our agenda is item 6B. Yeah, you only had to wait, what, three hours for it, so. To amend the seasonal limitation on operations in condition number two of the special use permit, this is allowing the drive-in movie theater on North 300th Street, uh, to have a longer season. What, how are things going? What are you, what are you looking for here?
Were you opening the public hearing then?
I'm sorry, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, we appreciate the time. You guys have a very full dance card. Thank you for saving one of them for us. My name is Jeff Carles with the Quasar Drive-In, uh, Fremont, Nebraska, 1898 Phelps Avenue. Jenny and I are here today, we had, uh, a pretty extensive list of conditional uses on our conditional use permit for the drive-in. One of those, uh, is item two and that one was originally, um, to come to the board to seek approval for a second screen. We're installing one screen on the property and then pending how traffic flow and everything works with the facility, we would come back and ask permission for the second screen. Something that got it added to that at some point between when we left the Planning and Zoning Commission and came before the board for the final vote, um, there was also a window that was added into that that is from Memorial Day to Labor Day, um, which we didn't necessarily agree with, but after coming a year and a half through the process, we weren't going to scrap it and start over again. We thought, we'll come back and address line items as needed. So, that is what we're asking today is on that item number two, to basically remove any restriction on the timeline of when we can be open. You wouldn't ask a lawn service to not cut grass after November 1st because, well, that's past your window. Uh, we want to be able to serve the community and be able to operate this fall when we're through with construction and when we're open. I've got a fairly extensive list of folks that I've kind of corresponded with and dealt with through the summer in trying to get, um, accommodations for them, whether that's the Ronald McDonald House or with the JDRF. There are all kinds of people that are very excited about coming out to the drive-in and working with us to either, whether, help raise funds for their cause or to get exposure or just to have some place for a corporate event, uh, to come out for the evening and have a movie, uh, that is car-centric, that's a, you know, there's been a lot more demand for our services since COVID-19 became a thing. You know, people didn't even know about drive-ins anymore until, uh, March 17th, I think you said the date was. So, we've been inundated with that and, you know, obviously, construction plans never go as planned, so we're still under construction, but we've made a lot of progress this summer. Our screen is finished, our grading and, and infield roads are done. We've got, you know, our building is going up this week, the, the framing and stuff for our concession building. And we hope to be able to host some shows this fall, especially in the Halloween season because that is a natural go-to with the drive-in, to be able to do, you know, a horror movie festival on one night for, you know, horror movie buffs and maybe have something, you know, that was more kid-friendly on the Saturday night showing. And we're just really excited and that hard start and hard stop seemed a little bit unreasonable and we would just like to scratch that verbiage from the conditional use. I don't know if Jenny wants to say anything?
I drove out for the groundbreaking and it was really exciting to see Jeff and Jenny and their family there. I have to make a personal comment, they're, uh, just a really strong family, great values. Uh, they just really are the kind of people that, um, America stands for. You're just a really a great family. I don't mean to go overboard on it, but I observed you and how your children act and all the rest of it, your friends. Anyway, I would, I, I think that just like any other business, they ought to have the ability to, uh, open when, as weather dictates. I mean, if it turns out just like this last week, we had this beautiful span of weather, if that had been a weekend and you were ready, you could have opened for the weekend for something. I think that we need to, uh, lift this restriction and let them operate as they see fit. I, I know, I very, I trust them tremendously. They are very good neighbors. You know, they have, uh, there are farms in the area. I have relatives who farm in LaChara and farm in Saunders County and so, uh, I know that in Valley in that area. So, uh, you know, I, it's a respected profession and, and this is a great one. This is really exciting to see this happen. It'll be a wonderful addition to our community. So, I hope that, uh, I'd like to see us remove that restriction, let them operate as any other business person would, really. They, you need that ability.
Correct. Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
I agree with what Commissioner Boyle said and when we close a public hearing, you know, I plan to second or make the motion that we allow you that totally and wish you the best of success. Be great.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thanks for this. This is, this is great. I've been excited about this since the first time you brought it to us and I, I'm looking forward to it. Uh, growing up, I have lots of fond memories of, uh, going to the drive-in. We used to pop popcorn at home and bring it to the drive-in, that's how down home it was.
We'd appreciate it if you didn't.
I know, I know. That was back in the day. What, what can I say? Here's my one question, and I hope you can do it this fall. I hope the weather and, uh, construction and everything cooperates on that. What's the first film?
We, we put it out there and this is because, going back to the first VCR we ever bought from Rose at Nebraska Furniture Mart, we brought home a copy of American Graffiti and that's been the first thing that gets played on any new video equipment in our, in the Carls household since I was five years old. So, we've got it set up to be, um, our soft opening, which will be kind of the, let's try to break it with friends and family. We're going to show American Graffiti at that with maybe another car movie, but our first public opening, uh, double feature movie will be American Graffiti in Greece.
That's great, that's great. Well, good luck and, uh, be sure and give us a heads up. I'll be there.
Almost definitely.
Buying popcorn.
Commissioner Borges.
Well, thank you for coming before us and giving us the background information. One of the things that, um, did bother me is that the change after you left the public hearing and came here, um, so I'm glad that we can take item by item and talk about it. I think, again, your biggest, um, point in terms of, we are looking for something, a gathering spot for people to be able to go to during this COVID and this is, um, absolutely a, a perfect venue for that. And so, um, I too support, as I told you, the, um, the extending of the, uh, or taking that restriction off, um, because again, I think that not only during this time, but again, we need some good wholesome activities for families, um, and kids to be able to attend and this is one of them. So, thank you. And I apologize for not making the groundbreaking. I wasn't making, uh, public appearances due to my husband's health.
I told him to stay home because it was right after everybody was kind of hunkering down. It's like, no, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
You can see how well he takes orders.
He's very stubborn, yes.
No, I, uh, I, I was with you in spirit, but due to my husband's health, I wasn't making public appearances.
Completely understood.
But I was with you and I'm excited for this to open and hopefully could make it when you do, um, the initial opening, so.
We are too.
Thank you.
I, I will say that the idea of the, the public hearing that we're having, the special use permit that you have been granted, is to allow for more public input, to allow, and as I told you before the meeting, man, you guys have a lot of friends. I, I mean, I have just been overwhelmed at the number of emails and, and what I love is they're not all form letters where people, it's, these are all individual sincere messages of support from people in your neck of the woods. I, I mean, that's, that's how the system works. If you've got the support of the neighbors, uh, we're more likely to go along with what you want to do. We want to be respectful of them as well.
Our communities have been great and I, I say communities because we'll, we'll serve Omaha, Lincoln, Fremont, Valley area, Blair, folks from all around, and they've all been so supportive and so helpful with anything that we've needed to get figured out or to get accomplished through this has been, it's, we're very blessed.
Very good. Would anybody else like to address this group during this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing.
If she'd like to make the motion, I'll second it.
Everybody wants to make the motion. Okay, Commissioner Borges is making the motion. Commissioner Morgan? Seconding.
Great.
Further questions or comments to the motion? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Very good. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much. We'll see you next year about the second screen.
Okay, I will come back now to item A on the public hearings and that is the hearing to set the final tax rate for 2021. Joe? Go, all right, we have a motion to approve.
Well, we're, if the public hearing's open.
Oh, yeah, 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 public hearing. Thank you, thank you. Okay. So, what are we looking at here, Joe?
Um, as you know, on, um, August 25th, we approved the budget and so, the second part is what we're going to do today and that's approve the actual levy. And the levy is, is consistent, is based on the budget that was approved. And so, just the highlights, you can see this form, uh, there's lots of numbers on it now. This came down from Lincoln last year about putting, putting it in this format. But, um, just the highlight here is that the levy, uh, for the county as a whole will remain unchanged at 29.559 cents, uh, which, like I say, is unchanged from last year. And then the, there's also a levy that gets approved today, uh, for the library and that went up, uh, a fair amount, uh, it's 3.12 cents. And that what went up driven by, uh, we basically matched the spending of the city, uh, on a per capita basis and the city, uh, increased their support for the library. So, uh, to, to match that under the terms of the inter-local agreement is, is why that goes up. And, uh, so here's the, like I say, it's basically consistent with the budget and the, um, levy is flat. So, with that, I take any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Joe? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And Joe, thanks for this. Um, the, uh, handout is instructive because I think, a couple of years ago, this is a property tax increase question and, um, a couple of years ago, the legislature saw what was going on around the state where property taxes would go up, but the mill levy wouldn't go up and the local government, county board, city council, whatever, would say, hey, no tax increase. So, they passed a law that said, oh, if you're going to do that, you must tell people there's a property tax increase. That's what this is. So, if you go onto this page, and this is because of state statute, it wasn't done before, you'll see 2019, 2020 property tax requests, 140,107, 725 dollars for Douglas County. And you will see down the page, 2020, 2021 proposed property tax requests, 150,468,298 dollars, an increase of 10,360,360,573 dollars. That's a property tax bill that's increased over $10 million in a year. They're telling you that, we're telling you that, because we are compelled by state statute, although it's not quite clear from this page, to tell you that. Here's taxation in a nutshell. Base, what's your property worth, times rate, what's the mill levy, equals the tax. If either of those things go up, your tax goes up. So last year, the base went up a little, and the rate went up 16 percent. There was a mill levy increase. And your tax went up as a result. This year, your base has gone up again. I think it's about 7 percent. Mill levy stays the same, but the tax goes up. Base times rate equals tax. So you're looking at a 10 million dollar plus property tax increase on every property taxpayer in Douglas County. And this is something that I've talked about repeatedly. It wasn't going to probably get much discussion this morning, but I'm not willing to pay that because it's unnecessary. We raised property tax rates, the mill levy, last year to pay again for an unnecessary scheme across the street, and this is part and parcel of that. Had we not done that scheme across the street, your property tax amount would not necessarily have gone up. This is paying off a non-voter-approved bond issue to build what is described as a kiddie jail by P.J. Morgan. I don't think, Mr. Morgan, I've actually used kiddie jail as a phrase, but that's unnecessary, that we don't need. We have Douglas County Youth Center, perfectly adequate. We could refurbish it for a lot less. You're doing a property tax increase vote here this morning, so I'm going to vote against that.
I shouldn't go there, but I have to come back to the building commission meeting where we were voting on going forward with the courthouse annex and, and the juvenile detention center. And Commissioner Kavanaugh came to the meeting and urged us to vote, to move forward with the courthouse annex. And I said, you understand, this will require a tax increase to pay for this. He said, I understand that. And he supported it at that time. Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Is it all, and I think when P.J. and I worked with Joe to look over these, these spending proposals, various offices, you know, we, we do have to recognize that a large number of our employees are unionized, and, which I'm happy about. I think they need the right to have to bargain for working conditions and wages and so forth. So I'm very much a union, pro-union person. So, but when that occurs, they're entitled to be paid. You've called today, you called for combat pay for people who are in the correction facility and working with COVID. So where that money would come from, I don't know what you're thinking, but it would have to come from here. And so that, that could be pretty pricey. I think, I suggested earlier, we look at a different working schedule. That might cost money, but it may boost morale and end up with a better product. You know, government services are not free, and believe me, no one thinks they are. And so we have the responsibility to provide the mental health facilities, the care for the aged and elderly, Alzheimer patients. We have to care for the people who come into the mental health clinic. We took over the detox center. The Catholic charities decided they didn't want to run, and they're doing a great job over there. All these, all these services that we serve, as I talked to this morning, and the difference between what the city does and the county, we're the ones who go directly to the people in most cases, although the city does quite a bit of that, too. These services are essential. It pays the, for the people like Melissa who showed up here and does such a great job, and her staff, and all the work she's doing. There's, there's someone to be paid for doing that excellent work, and there's a price to it, and this is it. And I, I don't think, you know, I understand what you're saying. I'd rather, I don't know what we would cut, you know. To tell you the truth, we've looked at it. There's maybe the branch offices for the treasurers. He's got five. Maybe we should shut down four. I don't know. We should do what the state did. They've only got two DMVs now. One's out in, in France, and a little bit west of France, in 170th Street. You'd have, I'd have to stop and get gas a couple of times to get there, I suppose, and Mary Ann, I'd stop at her house and get a sandwich or something. But anyway, so we got that going, and then the second place is over on 56th and Ames, and the next one's in Sarpy County. So there's nothing in this whole region where you can get a driver's license or whatever it is you need. You can't get it. So I, I wrote to the governor and said, consider coming in with one of our branch offices or something. This isn't working. But anyway, that's more expense, too. The service to the public, that's what we do. And, you know, we had to build, on that United Way building is being remodeled into a jury assembly because of COVID. And it's going to be about $300,000 to remodel it so that it's suitable for jury assembly. We don't have a place where they can come, and we only have this big room for anything, and this is in high use. So all these costs, I think, are legitimate. They're considered one at a time. I think we're so fortunate, frankly, and I tell him too, Joe Lorenz is a standout. He really, he has a full grasp of what our spending needs are, what our abilities are. He's moved into this position so well. We're so fortunate to have him. If anybody deserves combat pay, it's probably Joe. So, but I, I want to say, I, you know, who's for a tax increase? Nobody, but, and this really is not a, I mean, it's increased revenue, and it's all property taxes, and the only thing we can do is try to treat people fairly when they come into the BOE and, and see if they are, and we did this time. I think we did some good work. I'm not happy with how that operates, but we tried to do the best we could. So bottom line is, this is nothing new. I understand what the state wants to do, but we only do what the state tells us to do. So if they want us not to spend money, then they have to cut our services and figure out what's going on. When mental health was transferred from the federal level to the state, it bounced down to the locality, and it never was the same. So we're doing the best we can, and I, I'm going to be, I'm going to vote yes for this. It's a, it's what we came up with, and I think it's the best plan that we could possibly come up with. So Joe, thanks for your hard work. P.J., good to work with you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address this board during this public hearing? Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and what we're looking at here clearly is a state-mandated reveal of a 10 million dollar plus property tax increase in Douglas County. The idea of hazardous duty pay for our first responders and our healthcare providers is COVID-related cares money, not property tax. COVID that we had 166 million for, that you just put 3.3 into the MUD building for. COVID-related cares funds do not come out of a property tax bill for Douglas County. So that's what I was advocating for our first responders and, and healthcare providers, COVID-related cares money. The property tax increase here is largely going to pay for the scheme across the street. And I have said from the beginning that if we had put the courthouse annex and even the MUD building on the ballot and let the people decide, I would have supported that. Didn't do that because you knew that the, what Commissioner Morgan calls kiddie jail, would not fly. The people don't support that idea, and that's what this tax increase is, is for. For the private corporation, which is now going to get 3.3 million more to do their construction scheme across the street at the property taxpayers' expense. That's what we're voting on here today. Property tax increase for a wasteful product, wasteful project that we don't need, and I'm going to vote no.
You said the 3.3 million is coming out of property taxes?
No, the 3.3 million is going on top of what, what's going on top of what is, is already given to them.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, you are absolutely an amazing person. For you to say to me, when I've asked you publicly here for weeks, weeks, and I hope the other commissioners will tell me that I'm wrong on this. I don't want you to tell me. I have asked you to have respect for the juvenile center and not call it a kiddie jail because parents have called. You're the only one on this board who's ever used the word kiddie jail. And I resent you trying to twist facts as you always do. And I've tried to stay quiet and allow you to continue your six-to-one voting record that you're so proud of. And I am really, really disgusted with you, and I want you to personally know that. And I've never said that to another elected official because I try to be respectful. But when you said that twice, I let the first time go, that I called it a kiddie jail. I would never do that. And I just want you to know that I think it's deplorable, the way you twist facts.
Thank you.
I have to point out to you that you can go back in the record, and I urge you to do that, and look for me ever calling it a kiddie jail. You called it a kiddie jail.
Okay.
I have never, ever called it a K-I-D-D-Y jail, kiddie jail. That is wrong. You are wrong. But you won't go back in the record. You will conflate what I have said, what a lot of people said about the kids' jail, with your kiddie jail. I never said that. You said that this morning. Go and check the record and get your facts straight before you go attacking people.
All right. I, I don't need to split hairs between a kiddie jail and a kids' jail. This is a public hearing about the county's budget request, and I would like the conversation to come back to the budget, please. Further comments about the budget? All right. We will then close the public hearing. What is the?
I make a motion to approve. If there's no motion out there.
There is not. All right, motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Further questions or comments? Could we please vote?
Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, while our commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. Brings us to public hearing on item C, adoption of text changes to the county's subdivision regulations, preliminary plat and final plat regarding notification distance to surrounding landowners from within one mile to within a quarter mile.
I think we should postpone this for a month.
Oh, Doug.
I'll be sitting back there.
I will open the public hearing in this regard, Commissioner Boyle. Doug, what are we looking at here?
Okay, so about a month ago, you recall, we approved massive changes to our zoning regulations. And one of those changes was that we set the adjacent property owner's notification distance to a half mile. So there's a couple of places in the, in the subdivision regulations which also need to say that, and so that is the purpose of this text amendment, is to change the, a section of the preliminary plat and the final plat section to say that neighbors within a quarter mile will be notified. That way, the zoning regs are consistent with the subdivision regs.
All right, very good. Questions or comments to this idea? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Commissioner Kavanaugh, how do you vote? Vote yes? Okay, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. The final public hearing, item D, is adoption of the 2018 International Electric Conservation Code. Doug?
So recently, the state updated their version from the 2009 edition to the 2018. We follow the state in regards to this, so we would ask that you adopt the 2018 IECC as recommended by the planning commission.
Very good. Any, Commissioner Boyle?
Ms. Grant, does this add any further regulation over business or people who want to do work of any sort, like permits or different kinds of equipment or materials they have to use?
I, I wouldn't say that it would. This kind, this code deals with like windows, insulation, conservation-type energy-saving.
Okay.
Things. So to my knowledge, no, it does not.
Okay, well, do me a favor and kind of keep an eyeball on it, and some of these things, after a year or so, you discover that it's switching to some kind of material for, you know, the windows or whatever it is, and it adds expense and things like that, and it causes hardship for consumers as well as people who are installing them. So if you keep an eyeball on that, I'd appreciate it and let us know.
Roger that.
Only if it, only if it's detrimental. You don't have to come back and, but keep a bye-ball, will you?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Any other comments during the public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
I will second that. Questions or comments to the motion? Then I would call for the vote.
Doug, thank you very much. You really do a good job all the time.
Motion passes six to zero.
You're another one of the standouts.
I appreciate that.
Thanks a lot. I'll see if I can get you a pass to the drive-in.
Thank you, Chris.
Just a second, Doug, I think.
For the clerk, did my vote register last time? Because I saw that there was only a five to one.
It did. It was Commissioner Kavanaugh who was missing, yeah.
Take care. I'll try to get you a pass to the drive-in.
I'll bring in my own popcorn.
Yes, don't tell him, though. Thanks, Doug.
This brings us down to, anything on the budget report?
No, I think we've done the damn, I mean, done the work.
All right, good. Item A two under Finance Committee is approval of a resolution setting the preliminary tax rates for miscellaneous subdivisions as provided by Nebraska Statute 773443.
Yeah.
Motion on the second. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. At this point, Commissioner Ferguson, Commissioner Ferguson asked early on if she could have a point of privilege in this meeting, and this would be a good opportunity for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have just a couple of things, and as you know, this month is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I just wanted to put up a couple of flyers. And this one in particular, I think, is useful because it gives numbers. And so over 44,000 Americans die of suicide every year. And suicide is the fourth leading cause of death for people between the ages of 18 and 65. And for every death by suicide, there are over 25 suicide attempts. And suicide can be prevented, and that's the message that I'd like to send today. And you may ask, well, what can we do? And this next flyer is pretty simple things that we can do. So when you're approaching someone or you think someone is in need of someone to talk to, just ask. Ask if they're okay, and listen. And again, listen to hear what they're saying. Stay with them, secure, and then call the number there on the line, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. And again, it, it takes all of us to be aware of the signs. It takes all of us to open up our arms and our hearts to someone who's struggling. And don't ever take for granted someone's position on how they are because they're, they could be carrying around a very big burden and just don't have anyone to talk to or turn to. And so, again, this is the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I just wanted us to, again, bring it to the forefront and, and really, really pay attention and be there for those that are struggling. And during this COVID, we've heard that there are people who are struggling with the isolation, struggling with their depression and anxiety. And again, if you can lend a helping hand or an ear or, or a hug, let's do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Boyle.
I, I really, I really appreciate that a lot. I think it's, my family's suffered from that suicide, and it's very, very difficult. And they, I think the, something I saw on television the other day was really remarkable, and I don't mean to, that presentation you had was excellent. But what I heard on television was a man who lived in San Francisco, and he was But what I heard on television was a man who lived in San Francisco, and he was suicidal. And he was... And it's probably because he was in San Francisco. But as he walked on the street, went to the grocery store, nobody ever spoke to him. Nobody ever saw him. He just was talking about how lonely he felt, even though he was in a crowd and all this sort of thing. And he had decided that if somebody talked to him about taking his life, that he wouldn't do it. Well, he walked to the Golden Gate Bridge, and he was there. And as he's contemplating going over the side, someone walked up to him, and he thought, this is it. And he said, the guy said, "Do you know of a good restaurant in Sausalito?" And he said, "No." And then the guy walked away, and the fellow jumped up, and he did jump. He survived. But he jumped off the bridge to commit suicide. No one spoke to him. So you know what I've done? I... This is... Of course, I'm a... I drive my family a little bit crazy. I was at my son Mike's house, and there were people walking by on the other side of the street, and I'm going, "Hey, how are you?" And waving at him. And he goes, "What are you doing?" You know? And so I said, "I'm just being friendly to people." He says, "Well, you're being weird." I said, "No." "Not really." I said, "What's amazing is when you're walking like to the grocery store, and there's people coming out, and there's a woman who has... She's a Muslim, and she has... She's dressed fully, you know." And so what I do is I go by them and always speak to them, and I nod out of respect. I never try to touch them or anything, but just say good morning to them, and you can see them smile and say, "Good morning." And yesterday, I was at UNMC, and there's an African black couple walking out. And I talk to everybody and just say, "How are you doing?" And you'd be surprised, the smiles that come up and just... It's just what it says to somebody is, "I see you." "You exist." And anyway, so it turns out, this guy, his wife worked at Corrections, and she was a sergeant. And they were getting in their truck and stuff, and I was visiting with them. And then he said something so kind about Ann. It was just really nice, how much he respected her and stuff, just out of the blue. And so that's... It helped me, you know? I mean, I'm not thinking about that. But I mean, the point is that we all need to recognize people in grocery stores, speak to them, say hello. It just takes a minute, and it's really surprising. And when I see a man or a woman with little kids, I say, "Oh, you got your helpers." And, "Oh, yeah." But just acknowledging somebody, saying, "I appreciate you're doing this, and it's really important." I think we ought to probably, once in a while, flash up a number on the screen for suicide help or something, because it's really rampant. I talked to a friend out of town, and they have not been out of their home since March. And it's getting weird. So we need to help people. Thanks a lot, Marianne. It was great.
That's exactly what we need to do, Commissioner Boyle, is just take the time to say hello.
Yeah.
That's it. Smile.
Sounds like rolling this together.
That's right.
And it's a great message, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And the second real quick item, and she's left the chamber, and she's probably going to kill me for announcing this, but I'm going to do it anyway, that our own Kim Havikati
Oh, yeah.
has been nominated by Congressman Bacon as the Nebraska recipient for the Angels in Adoption Award through the Congressional Coalition on Adoption Institute. And if there is anyone who is...
Yeah.
Boy, more deserving than this, I don't know. But Kim is the one. She's been such an addition, great addition to our staff when it comes to our juvenile justice issues and the work that she's done since she's been here. And to be honored like this and recognized like this and continue the work on it is phenomenal. So we congratulate her for that.
Can I add, I think she said she won, too?
Yeah, yeah. It was beyond nominating. She won the award.
I'm sorry, I missed... Yes, yes. I read it wrong.
Thank you for... Yeah, yeah, good. Good people we have helping us.
Yes, absolutely, we do.
Thank you. Okay. I really see nothing further on the agenda. I don't think we need to talk about legislative issues too much. I hope not. So this, in my mind, brings us down to executive session. We do have need for an executive session for litigation and negotiations. So...
I'll make the motion that we go into executive session. Also, the Zoom meetings are not really...
His mic's not on.
...confidential, and I think we should possibly...
Omit having our executive sessions on Zoom. And I know that that's fairly accurate. I don't know if others have heard that. You know, I just think we should not be doing that. And I appreciate Mark Kraft and what he does. And, you know, I think we can make sure he's updated about it.
Well, I have not heard that.
He's heard it, yes.
Oh, golly, shucks. Yeah. Well, shucks. Sorry, Mark. We're not secure. We will...
It's not just Mark Kraft. This is basic public health hygiene, not to go into that small room during this pandemic. Zooms can be made as secure as a law office. I know this because we use them for legal stuff, as do the courts. So whatever we have to do to make Zoom secure should be done to preserve the security of our collective health, rather than sacrifice our health because somebody doesn't want to do the needed security app on Zoom. Doesn't, to me, make a lot of sense.
Commissioner Boyle?
It's a good point. We could, you know, I suppose these rooms back here, you can close those things, and we could have a pretty good-sized room for privacy there if we ever wanted to do that. One of these rooms back here. The other thing is, maybe go to 903. I don't have a problem with that at all. That's, you know, I mean, I understand. I mean, this...
Well, we went to 903. Last time Commissioner Kavanaugh complained about being in this room, we moved up to 903, and he didn't come to the meeting. And so we all said, "Why did we move out of this room for a commissioner that isn't even coming?" And at that point, we came back down here.
Well, I understand that you probably don't have a grasp of the technology involved in secure Zoom calls for public health purposes, but the whole world's using them. I don't know why the Douglas County Board can't.
We will catch you up to speed later, Mark, on what's going on here.
So go behind closed doors, and I hope you stay well.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Well, there's a Zoom app here that can be as secure as any law office.
We have a motion to adjourn.
We don't want to use it. I understand that you want to have...
We still need a second, Commissioner Duda.
I will second... Commissioner Boyle, second, so let us vote on going into executive session for negotiations and litigation.
All right. Other than Commissioner Duda, I pretty much... I assume everyone's voting yes?
I assume so.
Yes, yes. Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, are you voting yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'm not going to vote unless we have an accessible...
We don't care if you vote.
All right. Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no. Other commissioners voting yes.